Call the meeting to order. First on the agenda is approval of the minutes.
I move to approve.
Is there?
I'll second it.
All right, is there any discussion?
Nope, confirming this is the September, is it twenty?
September twenty-fifth.
Okay, yep, yep, no discussion.
All those in favor say hi.
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 Opposed? Carrie's? Have a comment? Or anybody who doesn't want to speak on an agenda item? Is there anybody online? All right, action items. First on the agenda is Planning 101 Staff Presentation.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Hallie King. I'm a Senior Planner with Deschutes County Community Development. And I'm going to get my screen up here. Moment. And I do have printed copies of the PowerPoint. What if it's like a printed copy?
I'll take one if you've got one spare. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, and so again, it's great to see everyone. I know I haven't presented in front of the Planning Commission before. So just a brief, again, introduction. I'm Hallie King. I'm on the current planning team here at Deschutes County. So dealing with our quasi judicial land use applications, building permit, front counter duties here at the county. So great to have this opportunity to meet everyone. And this presentation, you know, is going to be kind of Planning 101, sort of an overview of our local land use system, how that interacts with the state, and then diving into a bit of the current planning procedures for quasi judicial applications. I know the Planning Commission generally sees more of the legislative actions, but certainly the quasi judicial process is interesting and going to kind of go through that as well. And so I know we've got our Director here, as well as Will Groves. We've certainly got time at the end reserved for any questions that the Commissioners may have. But certainly, as I'm going through, if there's anything top of mind, don't hesitate to ask. So again, the first slide kind of goes without saying, you know, but what is planning? Again, I know the Commissioners are very familiar with our land use system here, but you know, at its highest level, planning provides a vision for the community today as well as the community in the future. You know, at its core, the goals are to maximize health, safety, and welfare for our community. And it's also a critical government function that looks at, considers, you know, how we want to grow as a community, how we want to look, what impacts and what impacts that might have on our spaces. And so generally speaking, planning has two main focus areas. Long range planning, which is the long term vision, growth, change for the community. It's kind of the policymaking arm of planning. Things like, you know, comprehensive planning, area planning is sort of the focus of long range. And then current, like I touched on earlier, is really the implementation arm of land use planning. So we are now in current planning. We're applying policy choices, zoning regulations. We're applying that now on a day to day basis to individual properties. So before I kind of jump into sort of the overarching land use system, I did want to touch on a few landmark legal cases that really form the foundation of why we do planning today and how that's done. And these are also great dinner table conversations to impress your relatives at Thanksgiving if you want to cite law, case law from these. But the first one, the first one is nineteen twenty-six. It's a Supreme Court case. It's Village of Euclid versus Ambler Realty. And sort of the setting the table for this case, it was a Village of Euclid, Ohio, actually adopted a comprehensive plan and a zoning ordinance that set rules and restrictions on the appellant's sixty-eight acre property and essentially zoned their property for residential use only. The Ambler Realty thought that that violated, essentially reduced their land's value for industrial uses and therefore was an unconstitutional taking. And just as a quick sidebar, a taking is essentially where government regulation restricts the use of private property to such an extent that the landowners deprived of reasonable use of their property. And so the Supreme Court ruled in favor of Euclid, Ohio, in this case, and found that zoning was a valid exercise of police power as long as it bears a relationship to a legitimate public purpose, safety, health, and welfare. And so again, it upheld their application of zoning rules and said that it's reasonable that you would, you know, zone property residential, zone property industrial, again, under the, you know, under a public purpose. So again, that really paved the way for zoning in this country. The second one moving is somewhat related, so Penn Central versus New York City. This is, in this instance, Penn Central wanted to build essentially a high rise office tower right over Grand Central Station in New York City. The Historic Landmarks Commission denied the application, saying that it wasn't compatible with their historic landmarks laws. And so Penn Central obviously took them to court and said that it was a, essentially that landmark law took their rights, their air rights, over the train station. And it didn't provide just compensation to offset the taking. Again, Supreme Court found that New York City was, you know, was constitutional and was doing the right thing in enforcing their laws and that that was a legitimate reason to have a rule, you know, against development, again, under the guise of protecting safety, health, and welfare. And this also brought in the concept of just compensation. So again, if a reasonable economically viable use remains, you don't have to provide just compensation. And again, in this case, Grand Central Station was a legitimate use. It was generating revenue. They weren't, the property owners weren't being deprived of continuing that reasonable use. Yeah, and then moving on to kind of more recent-ish court cases. So nineteen eighty-seven and nineteen ninety-four Nolan and then Dolan. A lot of times you'll hear those two referred to together. Those particular cases were tied to rough proportionality and essential nexus. So in the Nolan case particularly, a property owner wanted to essentially replace their beach bungalow with a larger home, and the Coastal Commission approved it, but said, you need to provide, we could prove this, but you need to provide an easement across your private beach that would connect to public beaches. And it said, we want to, you know, encourage public access on the beach, all of that. The property owner, again, did not agree with that. And so went all the way to the Supreme Court. Supreme Court actually ruled in favor of Nolan. They found that the requirement to have that condition of the easement, which another term you'll hear is exaction. That's synonymous with a condition. Essentially, we can approve this, but you need to do, you know, X, Y, Z. That imposing that condition was unconstitutional and that they recognized that while protecting public beach access is a legitimate interest, the easement did not address the specific impacts that were identified in their decision. And so again, that this condition lacked a nexus to the stated purpose. And again, that's where you'll see that term essential nexus used a lot in land use law and in crafting conditions. There must be a connection between a condition and the purpose of the mitigation. And then to add to that element, so Dolan versus City of Tigard. And this is in Oregon, obviously Tigard, Oregon, went all the way to the Supreme Court. The city was, again, imposing certain conditions on a commercial expansion. But the conditions were, so Tigard conditioned approval on dedicating land for a public greenway and a bike pedestrian path related to mitigating traffic and to help with flood control. The courts found there was a nexus between the conditions and what it was trying to mitigate, but that the conditions were not roughly proportional to the impacts of the project. And the courts didn't establish an exact, you know, calculation for how to figure out proportionality, but essentially there has to be an evidence based determination. So data, studies, calculations to relate the condition and its proportionality to an impact of a project. So, and I feel like we could probably spend hours talking about different legal cases, but I just wanted to kind of give that overview for ones that do come up pretty regularly.
If I can, Mr. Chairman and Planning Commissioners, Peter Gatawski, Community Development Director, I appreciate Hallie saying you'll hear the Nolan and Dolan test, which is kind of the takings. The heightened concern when you hear any of us here, Nolan, Dolan, we're probably calling Stephanie to get her involved. But another term that you hear is Euclidian zoning. And going back from the Village of Euclid, it is true, and Hallie did an excellent job of summarizing the police power and establishing the ability to, for localities to regulate land use. But there were some consequences of Euclidian, residential over there, industrial over there. So they, I mean, our society and local governments, communities are wrestling with the results of Euclidian zoning today because we, there were choices were made starting in the twenties and it became precedent. We're going to put those uses that we think are incompatible over there. We're going to put single family over here. We're going to put, you know, multifamily over here. And the conversation today is elevated about how do you integrate those uses in a way that allows for greater compatibility, transportation connectivity, you know, walkability. And so you'll hear the term, oh, this is Euclidian, you know, this is Euclidian practice. And it's stemming back from that case. And it's, and cities across the country applied that zoning. And as we have, you know, become more aware of those maybe unintended consequences, local governments, state governments are, you know, engaged in conversations and policies and practices that try to do a better job of integrating work in housing and how transportation functions in a way that was far more maybe simplistic, you know, literally a hundred years ago. So I just, that term, I just, you probably have heard it or now you're going to start hearing it at the Christmas parties. Euclidian zoning, you're like, oh, okay, I know where that came from. So anyway, just wanted to, little value added there.
Well, and I might add that Dolan has affected, had a big impact on Oregon. And Oregon's land use, I actually sit on the board of the organization that took that to the Supreme Court. So I'm very familiar with the Dolan case. That affected a lot of things, a lot of ordinances, a lot of around the state on exactions.
Okay, so kind of shifting over to, you know, here in Oregon, our land use planning program. Again, I know the Commissioners are probably very familiar with this. But, you know, essentially Senate Bill one hundred and one oh one is what established our planning program in nineteen seventy-three. The, you know, the crux of these bills was essentially to create a program where development and density were placed in our urban areas. And outside of our urban growth boundaries was rural, low density uses. The bills established our nineteen statewide planning goals and required local jurisdictions to adopt comprehensive plans and zoning ordinances that are consistent with these goals. Also, the Senate bills created the Land Conservation Development Commission, also known as LCDC. That's kind of the legislative arm of the land use planning program. They set goals, adopt implementing rules, and are policymakers. And then the Department of Land Conservation and Development provides technical assistance, reviews local actions, and enforces compliance with statewide planning goals. Again, the goals are, you know, really the foundation. Goals one through fourteen are the ones we most commonly here in Deschutes County interact with. Goals fifteen through nineteen include Willamette River Greenway and coastal resources. So we don't interact with those here in the county, but they would obviously apply in those certain locations. And then this slide, again, it just has an overview of county planning history. One highlight here is, you know, the county nineteen seventy-two was the first adoption of the county zoning ordinance with then the comprehensive plan preceding that in nineteen seventy. And then over the years, updates to the comprehensive plan, obviously with our most recent one just starting back in twenty twenty-three. Okay, so now wanted to talk, get more into a little bit of zoning. Again, I know our Commissioners know what zoning is, but really at its core, it's the mechanism that tells us how land is used, which is what, you know, zoning tells us what types of uses are allowed in each zone, how land is developed and what it looks like. So what our setbacks are, heights, you know, required parking, landscaping, kind of what shape it's going to take, and then how land is divided. So how minimum lot size and how you can partition or subdivision property. And so in Deschutes County, we have our base zone, which is kind of the, if you think of it as a layer cake, it's the bottom layer. And so that tells you what types of uses are allowed on the property. And I'm going to borrow an analogy from Will that he likes to use a lot about, it's kind of like the menu at a restaurant, right? If it's on the menu, it's an available use, whether it's permitted outright or conditional use. But it's really the guide for what you can and can't do on the property. And in Deschutes County, we sort of have three broad categories for our rural zoning. Our resource zones, which include exclusive farm use and forest. Our exception areas, which are residential, so RR ten, MUA ten. And then our unincorporated communities. So Tumalo, Terrebonne, Sun River have kind of their own chapter in the zoning code and their own kind of different requirements. And then most of our zones, well, actually, a lot of the county has overlay zones or combining zones. And that's kind of the next layer on the cake, which I'll talk about in just a second. But I thought this visual was kind of helpful to sort of visualize in a way of zones and, you know, on, starting on the far left are our resource zones, which basically are more restrictive on the types of uses they allow. Moving into our exception areas, again, MUA ten, rural residential. Unincorporated communities have a bit more expansive uses just because of, you know, there's a little bit more commercial, more residential in those areas. And then finally, all the way to the right are our incorporated cities. So Bend, Redmond, Sisters, Lapine, which those are obviously under the city land use jurisdictions. Yeah.
So Hallie, if I remember correctly, unincorporated communities, was there like a certain year that they had to be established in Oregon? I feel like, just because I live in the South County and we've been told we cannot become unincorporated as a community in the area we're at, like maybe ninety-four or something like that?
I can, yeah. Commissioner Williams, it's a great question. I believe you're right. It is nineteen ninety-four, but the way the rules were established then, it was at that point that local governments were obligated. And that was an era when we were in what was called periodic review. So counties like Deschutes had to demonstrate that their implementation of the Oregon land use program was consistent with state law. So when we were in periodic review and that law was put into effect in nineteen ninety-four, it settled at that point, the built environment as it was arranged or established from that point in the past. And so if there were communities that had features that resembled a resort community, so we have resort communities, we have unincorporated communities like Sun River. At the time, we had Lapine, which was not yet incorporated. Of course, rural communities like Terrebonne and Tumalo. And so while there's been a lot of interest in Greater Lapine, like we would really like to be a community. We would like to be able to have those mixture of uses and commercial opportunities. The rules that were put into place in nineteen ninety-four make it very, very difficult to do that under the, what's called the unincorporated rules that are administered under the Oregon Administrative Rule Process. So that's why rural areas that even have some rural density, it can't just say, we would like to designate this area over here for commercial uses. It makes a lot of sense because of this population center because they didn't have the fabric of rural communities like Tumalo and Terrebonne, the infrastructure in place. The state law precludes, I shouldn't say precludes, but it precludes it under that provision of rule.
And the areas that are not in the unincorporated, I believe, are not allowed to apply for grants for sewer water, things like that?
There, that is, I mean, the county can certainly take that, could take that initiative if they wanted to. You know, searing is ultimately, as we've seen with Tumalo and Terrebonne, is a process where voters have to engage and ultimately determine if they want to support through their tax structure or through some other mechanism. Both the Terrebonne Sanitary Authority and the Tumalo Sewer District are not taxing districts as you would typically associate with that kind of a conventional name. They instead have created a district boundary that gives them the ability to seek grants and funding for searing. That could certainly potentially, that could occur in a rural area. The one difference today is Tumalo and Terrebonne don't need a GOAL eleven exception because they're in a rural community. When you're in the unincorporated community outside of places like Sun River or in of Seventh Mountain or Tumalo and Terrebonne, GOAL eleven, which is one of Hallie's previous slides, obligates the governing body to demonstrate why sewer is necessary. Now, there's some recent state law that was passed that can more or less waive the requirement to demonstrate that you are compliant with GOAL eleven, but that requires the Oregon Department of Environmental Quality to declare a groundwater area of concern. And that's a state led effort. So probably more than you were, that was a long answer to a very good question, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, so moving on, I had mentioned our combining zones. So we have six in the county and it essentially, it adds a layer on top of that base zone. And generally is tied to a resource or something that the county wants to protect and adds, you know, additional regulations or additional review processes to make sure it meets the requirements. So you all, again, have probably seen many of these. Our landscape management combining zone is tied to the protection of scenic views and vistas for county roads, rivers, creeks, and streams. So the Deschutes River, there's an LM overlay that goes a quarter mile either side of the river. Other examples, I mean, Highway ninety-seven has a landscape management corridor, Spring River Road, Sizemore Road, Skyliners Road, Whitechus Creek, the Little Deschutes River. And so in this, the purpose of the overlay is not to preclude development in this zone, but it essentially has additional, you could call it sort of pseudo design review standards, looking at colors of buildings, heights, you know, and potentially additional vegetation. And so moving through, so airport safety, that's areas that are in and around our airports, looking at making sure uses are compatible with, you know, planes landing, taking off. Probably the most common that we see kind of on the current planning side is making sure roofing is non-reflective and there's not going to be any, you know, potential electrical interference with airplanes. So that's the one we see most commonly. But again, any property in that airport safety overlay zone, you know, they have to essentially agree that they won't interfere with air traffic above. Surface mine impact area is intended to actually protect the surface mine resources in the county. So folks that live within a half mile radius of a surface mine, there's an additional land use review. And it's really only applicable to noise or dust sensitive uses. So if you're building a new dwelling or a new church or a school, there's some just additional review required. And property owners in these overlay zones, the kind of the end result of this review is they sign something called a waiver of remonstrance, essentially agreeing that they know there's a mine nearby and they won't complain or won't, you know, yeah, won't complain about the mine activities. Wildlife area combining zone, again, I know the Commissioners are familiar with this. It's, you know, aimed at protecting our wildlife corridors in Deschutes County. The most practical application of this is, you know, it limits land divisions. It has a greater minimum lot area. And then there's regulations on placement of dwellings nearby roads. The idea there, again, is to put human activity near a disturbed corridor, like a road. There's obviously, there's like exception pathways to that rule, but that's probably the most common application we see of the wildlife area overlay. And then sensitive bird and mammal habitat is tied to protection of GOAL five resources, including habitat for our northern bald eagle, golden eagle, prairie falcon, osprey, gray owl, and big eared bat. And so this overlay zone has a radius around nesting sites. And so any construction within that radius, again, has an additional site plan review. Most commonly, there are restrictions on when construction can occur. And it's generally outside of the nesting season of the specific resource that the overlay is tied to. And then last but not least, sage grouse. This is all, you know, all out east along Highway twenty-six around Milliken, Brothers, and Hampton. And this is to protect the sage grouse bird and their nesting grounds and requires additional mitigations for large scale development or some development that's really close to a lek, which is the name for the nesting ground for the sage grouse. And moving on, I thought this slide was kind of interesting. You may have seen this during the comp plan process, but this shows land, essentially land ownership in the county. You can see about seventy-seven percent is actually in federal lands with the sort of orange being land, private property in county jurisdiction. And then the lighter yellow is within the city limits. And just as a kind of a sidebar, you know, Deschutes County planning, we don't have authority on federal lands. We don't have land use authority on federal lands. There are still requirements for federal property to get building permits and they're still subject to state building code. But an example of this is, you know, Mount Bachelor Ski Resort. Obviously, it's in county jurisdiction, but it's on federal land. So we don't review land use for Mount Bachelor. But if they wanted to, you know, expand the lodge, for example, they would still need to come through the county for building permits. So I wanted to just actually briefly stop there and see if there's any questions at this point as we're going through. No, okay, great, okay. I'll keep going. So want to touch a little bit, get into process of kind of current planning process. But first, just to set Um, but first, just to set the table, um, and kind of define the difference between quasi-judicial and legislative. Um, so quasi-judicial is essentially the application of regulations to an existing, um, factual setting or property. An example of this would be, um, a conditional use permit for a guest house on private property. Um, quasi-judicial applications have a one hundred and fifty-day processing time limit. Um, so there's, and that comes, comes from state, state statute. Um, and then legislative are those decisions that are broader policymaking decisions that could, could affect multiple properties, could affect county-wide properties. So, comprehensive, the comprehensive plan is a perfect example or, um, for, uh, the time, place and manner regulations for psilocybin is an example legislative amendment. Um, and these are generally not subject to the one hundred and fifty-day statutory clock. Um, and so for quasi-judicial, I'm going to kind of focus on quasi-judicial. Again, this is more of that current planning, specific property applications. Um, I mentioned that one hundred and fifty-day review timeline and that's a requirement that essentially the local, um, land use authority has to make a final decision within that hundred and fifty days. Um, so starting on the left, this is sort of day, day zero is when an application is submitted. There's a thirty-day completeness check, so case planner will make sure they've submitted everything they need, every, you know, um, all the application requirements are met. Once an application is deemed complete, that starts that one hundred and fifty-day clock. And that's where you see here the review period. Um, and in that review period, you know, there, a, a file could go kind of multiple different ways. It could be decided upon at the staff level. Maybe it's, needs to be elevated to a public hearing because there's an interpretive matter. Um, but I'm, for this purposes of this, this example, I'm going to say that this is a staff-level decision. There's a twelve-day appeal period, so if staff approves the application, there's a twelve-day appeal period. Um, if an appeal is filed, that then continues the appeal review. Um, and I'll get into a little more detail on appeals in a minute, but this is just to kind of show that, you know, there's a lot that the county has to fit in within that hundred and fifty days. Um, and we generally, you know, staff-level decisions, we aim to have those reviews done forty-five to sixty days to save time, you know, in the clock in the event of an appeal. Um, and, and there are exceptions to the hundred and fifty-day clock, but that's something an applicant can, can request. Um, but the state law does give an applicant the ability to, um, extend or pause the clock up to two hundred and fifteen days. Um, and so Title twenty-two, so we talk a lot about Title eighteen, which is the, the zoning code, which has all the zones, the combining zones. Title twenty-two is the county's procedures ordinance. Um, and that's what sets the framework for how do we process land use applications? How do we go through the hearings process? Um, so Title twenty-two tells us, you know, who, who we're required to notify, um, property owners and agencies, um, how they're notified. Um, so generally speaking, we have, um, for resource prop, development applications on resource lands, it's a seven hundred and fifty-foot notification radius. So all neighbors, all, or all property owners receive mailed notice. Um, non-resource lands, so RR ten, MUA ten, it's a two hundred and fifty-foot radius. Um, and then property owners are required to put property signage up. Um, and then again, this discusses notifying agencies, um, anytime we have a, an application and/or a decision. This also sets, Title twenty-two sets the order of the hearings body, um, on appeals, um, discusses public hearing procedures, how to run public hearings, when there's open records, um, all, all those sorts of things, and then how an appeal process is run. Um, and then I touched a little bit about on, on types of land use applications, but generally speaking, we have ones that are considered administrative reviews or staff-level reviews that are essentially decided upon, you know, by the planning director and staff. And then there's applications that are required to go through a hearings process. Probably the most common one we see is a plain amendment zone change, quasi-judicial. Um, those have a required, multiple required public hearings. Uh, but generally speaking, most of our quasi-judicial applications at the county start as an administrative review. Um, with the caveat, um, that the planning director has discretion, um, to elevate it to a public hearing. Um, this is, commonly occurs if there's an interpretive matter, um, that needs to be evaluated through a public hearing. Um, but yeah, most of our applications do start out at staff level. Um, so the appeals process, so, um, each, each-
Can I ask, sorry, before you started on appeals, is that right?
Yeah, go ahead.
Sorry to interrupt, but, um, I'm about a slide behind you. Just, I'm sorry, but I'm processing this as you're going along. So thank you for entertaining the question, Hallie. On, on the hundred and fifty-day clock, just, um, a couple of questions about that. Um, what happens if that timeline is exceeded? Um, and can that clock be paused and restarted and under what circumstances? And what parties can pause and restart it and that kind of thing? I don't know.
That's a great question. Um, so the, uh, state law allows an applicant to pause it for up to two hundred and fifteen days. So during that, that review window, once it's deemed complete, someone goes, hey, I want to, you know, we need to gather more information, we want to pause it for sixty days or maybe a hundred and twenty days. But statute only allows you to go to two fifteen to pause it. Let's say if someone runs out of that two fifteen, there's actually an additional, um, option that someone could, and again, this is the applicant, um, what I'm referring to, yeah. The applicant controls the land use clock. Um, they can also waive the one hundred and fifty-day clock completely. And they can say, if, you know, we, we aren't, you're not on a clock anymore, we waive our rights to, to that clock. Um, and then if I might need assistance on the, if the clock succeeded, um, I believe it's, it's called a writ of mandamus if a decision comes after the hundred and fifty days, which I know is not, is not a place the county, the county wants to be in, uh, so, um, yeah.
Good evening, your planning manager, Will Groves, and Hallie's got it exactly right. So when you think about the hundred and fifty-day clock, what that is, is a benefit that's provided to the applicant that says, we'll get this thing done within a hundred and fifty days. Or, you know, should you want to extend or waive that period, you're welcome to. But if we don't, you can force the item into the court system. So, uh, you know, if we get to day a hundred and fifty-one, an applicant can say, I'm done. I'm going to file a writ of mandamus and I want the courts to decide this matter. And, um, that can be obviously, you know, to the local jurisdiction, the board, whoever the hearings body is, that can be real frustrating. And so one of the most important things that we do as, uh, current planners is try to manage that clock to make sure that we don't exceed that. And, um, I, I won't get into it too far, but there's definitely, uh, games that get played with the clock. You know, people will either extend or not extend the clock. So let's say something comes out of a hearings officer with a relatively expended clock. We might be on day a hundred and twenty, a hundred and thirty, a hundred and forty. If the applicant wants the board to hear it, they can extend the clock and say, dear board, you know, we would love for you to hear this. Um, we think we're going to get some benefit out of you hearing it and therefore we will extend the clock for sixty days to provide you time to engage with it. Conversely, if, if an applicant thought the board might be unfavorable to their application, they'd say, no, we're not extending the clock. And therefore, board, you do not have time to hear that, at which point the, uh, the land use matters locally is final, the board has to pass on it and it, uh, and it, appeal rights go to Luba instead of the board. So there's, um, applicants have significant, and I'm just giving you the very beginning of this, applicants have significant strategic interest in the clock. It's quite rare for us to get a, uh, a mandamus order where a clock goes beyond a hundred and fifty days. And, uh, generally applicants aren't interested in shifting to courts. You know, there's a, you're, uh, you're, you know, you get out of this local land use system and now you're in front of a judge who doesn't have a lot of experience in land use. Um, you know, you're, you're trading venues and it's not certain that that's really going to be to your advantage. Uh, the thing that is to your advantage is that in many cases, if the county doesn't get it done within a hundred and fifty days and you file a writ of mandamus, you can, uh, recover some fees and costs associated with your application. So county is very strongly incentivized. I, uh, I think some of the scariest moments in my career were, um, P one of Peter's predecessors coming down the hall when a clock blew out a hundred and fifty days, even by no fault of my own, is, uh, it's, it's a giant, it's a giant, uh, thing in the minds of current planners. And so this clock, we spend a lot of time watching every day of it to make sure that we, we don't blow it out and we don't get to control a ton of it, you know, in the beginning. There's a period in the beginning where we, you know, we have to allow the completeness check. We have to, uh, you know, actually write the decision, allow notice periods to occur. Hearings officer takes a certain amount of time by contract and by the time that that's run, there's a very little discretion we have in terms of that clock. The other thing that can happen is we can have applicants that say, hey, hang on just a second, I'll get you something by Friday. And we say, okay, and then they don't. And they'll, they'll be here Monday, okay, it's not. Uh, Friday, we really need to extend the clock. We'll totally extend the clock if it's not here by Friday and all of a sudden we've lost significant days. And, you know, I frankly, in early my career, been played a fool for this as, you know, an applicant burned days off the clock and thus precluded the board from, uh, acting. So we have to be really quick on the buzzer about like, nope. Like either we're going to make a decision or you need to give us some more days on the clock. And a lot of, lot of rules around this. Thank you.
Okay, so going over, kind of hopping over to a, appeal process. Um, so, you know, each, each land use action, uh, there's rights, appeal rights associated with that. Um, and so those are local appear, appeal period is twelve days from the date a decision is made. Um, so an example would be there's a staff-level decision. Neighbors, um, if they disagree with the decision, they have twelve days from when the decision was issued to file an appeal. Um, and there's, again, Title twenty-two sets sort of how to file an appeal. You know, there's a form, there's a fee, has to meet the timeline of, for submittal, the twelve days. Um, and then also sets the order for which hearings bodies hear appeals. Um, with the hearings officer, which is our, you know, third-party land use attorney, kind of top of that list, the, the first, the first person, uh, um, to hear appeals. Um, following planning commission and Title twenty-two, twenty-four oh two oh does say there's specific circumstances in which the planning commission would serve as the, um, appeal body. The particular, um, language in the code is essentially, um, if a hearings officer declines to hear an appeal on grounds of a conflict of interest, then it would, it would bump to the planning commission as the hearings body. And then finally, the Board of County Commissioners. Um, so an appeal can, can, you know, if a hearings officer hears an appeal, they issue a decision, the appellant still disagrees, then they could appeal that to the Board of County Commissioners as the, sort of the final stop on that appeals process. Um, and ultimately, the board, um, does have discretion on whether they want to hear an appeal or not. Um, they either accept review of the appeal and then it sets into motion, public hearing, noticing, or they decline review of that appeal. Um, ultimately, it is the board's consider, um, decision and it's generally, it's done on a case-by-case basis. A couple factors, and Will alluded to this, um, where the board may not hear an appeal is if the clock is close to that one fifty or their time is run out. Um, because there's just not enough time to notice a public hearing, hold a public hearing. So oftentimes, um, where, where a project is and the clock can, can influence, um, those decisions. Um, the other one that we see often is this concept of deference, um, which is essentially that the board has deference when they're interpreting their own rules or their own local land use law. So something like a conditional use permit in the RR ten zone is exclusively, you know, those rules were created by, by prior boards and the board can interpret that. Where a board may not be given deference is when interpreting state law. So projects on resource zone lands, because EFU and Forest, those are all, those rules are set by the state. Generally speaking, the board would not be given deference on interpretation of a use in the EFU zone. So they may not want to hear that appeal and may just decline review and it may go on to Luba. Um, so again, it's, it's case by case, um, but those are kind of two, um, facts that, that often we see come into play, whether the Board of County Commissioners would want to hear an appeal or not. Um, and assuming if, if the board declines review of an appeal, then the decision of the prior hearings body becomes the final decision of the county. Um, if the board accepts review of an appeal, their decision will be the final local decision. Um, and then beyond the county, um, as we, as we kind of mentioned, Luba, the Oregon Land Use Board of Appeals, established in nineteen seventy-nine. If someone is, again, unhappy with the county's final decision, they can then go on to the state and appeal that to Luba. Um, for those appeals, it's actually a twenty-one-day appeal period and that's set by the state. Um, and that process, um, essentially, Luba's consisted of three members who are expert land use attorneys. Um, Luba, they have, have their own process, um, that they, that they run appeals through. But generally, um, the, their decision is what's called a final order and opinion. And it can result in, um, well, four, four different actions. They could affirm, meaning they affirm the, the local decision that was made. They could reverse that decision. Um, they could dismiss it or they could remand it. Um, and we do see remands fairly regularly, um, and I'll kind of talk about that, um, next, yep. So the concept of a remand, I like to think of it as a return. So they're remanding it or they're returning it back to the local government for further action on a specific set of issues. So they might say, you know, Deschutes County, you know, points one, two and three, you need to make more findings, you need to show your work more. And so they remand it to kind of give the county a, a second shot, if you will, um, at it, yeah.
If I may, just on the Luba remand, um, on the, just as Hallie noted, i- if there are, there, there can be certain issues that, um, don't have sufficient findings or it's unclear to the Land Use Board of Appeals, they're called referees, I believe, where they, they remand back because it's unclear to them how, how the decision, um, uh, complied with either state law or local code. And on that remand, it's just those remand issues that are revisited. All other issues, um, um, are resolved. And so someone can't say, I'd like a second bite of that apple on the issue that was raised during the original proceeding. That issue, it's, 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 there's another term called raise it or waive it. When you, when someone, um, appeals a quasi-judicial decision, they have to have raised those concerns or issues in the local proceedings to allow the Land Use Board of Appeals to review it. So if you don't raise it, um, you have waived your right to, to, um, to argue that it's inconsistent with state law. And so kind of on that same vein, if Luba issues a remand, it's just on those narrow issues. And some developers are, are, are willing, knowing that it's a super-complex controversial application, are willing to go through a local process, that they may know they have organized opposition. And they're willing to, to take the long view on a, uh, if Luba remands it because then it resets it to a very confined set of issues. And they can focus on those issues and we've had cases where matters have gone up and down the courts. But if it stays in the remand, it's just getting narrower and narrower and narrower. And ultimately, I mean, it's not the most efficient process, it can be quite expensive. But if someone, someone wants to continue to address those remand issues, I think the system is set up so they can presumably resolve it and, and get their local decision approved. But a point I'm making though is if what's on remand is limited to those issues that are directed by Luba and/or the Court of Appeals, if it goes up to the higher courts.
Can I, can I ask Mr. Chair a question at this point too? Uh, further on that, on just Luba, I should be informed on this and I'm not ashamed of ignorance, but just a thumbnail here with respect to time, I don't want to drag it out. But what, what do the proceedings look like? I mean, I assume that Luba has some kind of staff or something like that. And you say three members, do they each individually take up a case? Or do they do it collectively and then it's a majority sort of out, two out of three? But just kind of what it looks like, again- looks like. Again, I want to be respectful of time, but a thumbnail of that.
Good. Here comes Stephanie.
Stephanie Marshall, Senior Assistant Legal Counsel. Um, so the oral arguments are heard before a panel of three. And, um, you, usually you'll know ahead of time which three, you know, panelists or members will be hearing the case. Um, I'm not sure exactly what goes on behind the closed doors, but one, one, the opinions written by one of the Luba board members.
That's okay.
Though you'll see their name at the end of the, uh, final or, final order, uh, final opinion and order. So, um, so yes, uh, but I'm sure, I don't know for sure, but I would suspect that they have discussions and they might even, you know, have like a little round table and like, okay, you know, uh, it's your turn to write a decision or you feel really strongly, you should write this decision or something along those lines. So they do all participate. Um, one author's the opinion and, um, but all, all have heard the matter.
They've got staff.
You don't see, yeah, you don't see dissenting opinions. I know they do have staff.
Okay. Interesting. Thank you for that.
Yeah. So you don't have that dissenting opinion. So you don't have an opinion written by one board member and then somebody else chiming in like you might see in other, uh, I hate to say the term real courts, but in other courts.
Commissioner.
This is super interesting. Um, how, how are those three, so are there multiple, um, attorneys that could hear? And then three are selected or, and then how are, are they elected to be?
They're appointed by the governor and, um, and there are three at any one time. So you have people kind of coming on and off. Um, again, I, I could pay closer attention, um, to, you know, the, the somewhat political, you know, aspect that might be associated with that. But, you know, I mean, um, you know, you'll see the same three, uh, for a period of time.
Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, Commissioner.
After the, uh, local final decision, how long does the applicant have to appeal to Luba? Is that the 180 day to initiate review?
It's a 21 day appeal period.
Okay.
Yes.
Oh, I see here. My bad.
Yeah.
And there are lots of rules with how appeals are 21 days is, it's a hard and fast, you know, like, so if you don't get it in, um, and, and follow the rules, and there are OARs that set forth, um, a lot of this as well. Um, they could, you know, just kick it out at the outset, like, sorry, you didn't get it in, in time. Um, typically what happens with the county is when one of our decisions has been appealed, um, you know, in my law, in, in my, we have a paralegal who prepares the record because that's the first deadline after the appeal, uh, after the, uh, notice of intent to appeal is filed, uh, notice petition. Then we have to prepare the record, then the record submitted, then there might be objections to the record that, that we work out, I work out with, with the paralegal, with the attorneys that are participating. And once the record is settled, then there's, then there are other times, you know, you've got X many days for the petitioner to file their opening brief. And then, you know, X many days after that, that the county files their brief. And then, um, there may be a, a reply brief filed by the petitioners and then they'll set oral argument. Um, and there's also timeframes on when they're supposed to get their decisions out. They're usually a little bit late, you know, just, I think, again, the number of cases that are before them. But, um, but yeah, it's, it's, it's very interesting, you know? I mean, especially for those of us that are, you know, that like to, you know, check boxes and, and ensure that everything is lining up the way it's supposed to.
Anybody else?
Here I am, taking all that extra time.
Commissioner Kelly.
When do we say days? Do we mean business or calendar?
Calendar.
Mm-hmm.
Typically, and just kind of a side note, if it's a less than seven day period, um, uh, you, it might be business days, but I don't know. Um, I've seen that rule in other, other, uh, codes and other statutes, but you always, you don't count the first day. So if the county made their decision on Tuesday, the 12th, you don't count the 12th and then you start counting your days after that and you count the last day.
And Saturdays and Sundays count.
You count the Saturdays and Sundays. Yep.
Commissioner Hofkamp. Um, a quick question and probably a dumb one, but, um, and I, I know, uh, Hallie, that you're about to go on to the appeals process beyond Luba, but while, while county council's up here, cause I'm going to ask this at that point anyway. Um, it seems like in my lifetime that, that, um, people that are in the, in a criminal proceeding, um, once that's run its course, if it hasn't on either part, party sort of been to their satisfaction, then there's kind of a civil proceeding, sometimes in these high profile cases. It's like you have criminal and then civil for the same action, essentially. Uh, is there a equivalent with land use sorts of things? So after it chugs along through administrative, local jurisdiction, state, which you're going to go into next with your next slide and so forth, and up to the court, uh, up to the state Supreme Court. Is there another track that a particularly unsatisfied, say, uh, party to a suit or to a proceeding can take?
There, there are. Um, so the merits of the land use decision itself will be settled through that appellate process. But, um, yeah, to answer your question, and I'm going to draw back on, uh, one of the attorneys that I used to work with in Washington state. Um, he represented, and I would help him in his representation of, um, uh, at times applicants that believed that the decision was so egregious and it was upheld. And so then you have to go to the local government and file what's called a notice of tort claim. You have to wait for that period of time to expire. And then if you're still within the statute of limitations, because now you're going to be looking at statute of limitations, you could file, you could file an action, uh, for damages. But you're all, you know, there's a lot involved with that. Um, you know, there's different standards that apply to this, what, what we call, uh, generally a section 1983 claim, 42 SC, section 1983. It's a federal civil rights claim and it's based on like denial of due process. You can also bring in takings claims and, and matters like that. So that, those are damage types of actions and you're not seeking, there's nothing that can be done about the decision. Like the decision's there, it's, it's all good. But, uh, if you believe that you're especially aggrieved and you've lost money, you know, you lost, you know, you were going to build this great big huge thing and, and run a business and now you can't do that and you've lost all this money, you know? Um, and I'll also say, uh, just kind of as, you know, for, for interesting purposes, um, I've never in my practice been a part of a successful 1983 claim. Um, you know, typically respondents will remove it to federal court, so you're no longer in state court. Um, and there's just, there's just a lot involved and it's a very, very long process.
Interesting. Thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? Thank you.
So just back, kind of quickly back on, on the topic of remand. So we have, there's a local procedures for how we process remand. So again, this is when Luba says, Deschutes County, you know, we, we need more, more detail, more findings. The applicant has, so once a remand is issued by Luba, an applicant or the property owner has 180 days to initiate the remand. Um, so they have to essentially apply for it with the county and say, we're ready to address this remand, here's our application. Um, and then once they do that, the, we've talked about that 150 day clock with a remand, it's actually 120 days, so it's even shorter. So for, for the county, for, for current planning, we kind of, uh, when we get a remand initiated, we have to act quickly because we have to go back, we have to schedule a public hearing. So it goes back to the, the board of commissioners or the final local decision maker on that application. Um, so we have to, you know, notice a hearing, get through the hearing process. So those, those have to be acted on very quickly. And, and generally, again, like, like Peter mentioned, it's, it's focused on a specific set of issue areas. So it's more narrow, um, than you maybe it was originally at the outset. Um, and applicants can, um, either have a closed or reopened record. Um, generally we see applicants reopening the record because they want to add more evidence to support the issues on remand. A closed record would essentially be no new evidence. You just have to look at what's already in the record and make additional findings. But again, generally we're seeing people adding information to the record to support the findings. Um, and then a remand, so again, once a, let's say the, the board of county commissioners makes a decision on remand, it then starts back up again, the ability for someone to appeal that to Luba. So you can see, it can, it can be a cycle and then it goes back to Luba, they've got their, you know, final order and opinion that, that they make. Um, and then beyond Luba, so, um, Luba issues a decision. Again, if someone disagrees with their decision, um, or let me back up. If Luba, let's say Luba affirms a county decision, someone disagrees with that, the next appeal body or appellate body would be the Oregon Court of Appeals. And then above that, Oregon Supreme Court and then federal Supreme Court. So lots of layers, um, of appeals and it can bounce, bounce between each other and all of that. But yeah, that's kind of the, the pathway on, on appeals beyond, beyond Deschutes County and beyond Luba. So I wanted to touch on just to some, some broad, I'm getting, getting close, I think this might be my last slide. Um, and this one, wanted to touch on some legal concepts and certainly, um, I'm glad we have Stephanie and Will here to kind of fill in any, any gaps for, um, that I might include. But the first is this concept of collateral attack, um, which is a legal term that's essentially an attempt to challenge the validity of a prior judgment decision, um, in a separate proceeding that's not part of the original case or an appeal of that decision. Um, so kind of put in other words, um, in a, in a new case, um, a party cannot indirectly undermine the facts or conclusion of a settled case. So we, we see, um, so kind of a simple example of that would be, um, if there's a neighbor who did not appeal a conditional use permit for a guest house, for example, um, they couldn't, that neighbor couldn't later argue in a separate proceeding that the original guest house approval was somehow unlawful. Um, so hopefully that, that kind of makes sense. Um, and then law of the case is also known as issue preclusion. Um, and that essentially means that, you know, once a decision has been made, you, you essentially have to follow that decision. Um, it prevents a party from relitigating and issue a fact or law that was already litigated and decided upon. Um, and so there's, and there's kind of a five factor test, um, for when there may be issue preclusion. Um, and so, um, let me get the summary here. So one, the first one is the, the precise issue in the second proceeding has to be the same as in the first. Um, and I'm actually going to read, I'm going to read this, um, sorry, this is going to get a little bit, uh, jargony here, but, um, this is directly from a recent Luba case. Um, so when an issue has been decided in a prior proceeding, the prior decision on that issue may preclude relitigation of the issue if five requirements are met. So first, the issue in the two proceedings is identical. Um, the issue was actually litigated and was essential to a final decision on the merits in the prior proceeding. Um, the party sought to be precluded, had a full and fair opportunity to be heard, so they were participating in the hearing. Um, and the party sought to be precluded was a party or was in privity with a party to the prior proceeding. Um, and then lastly, the, um, prior proceeding was the type of proceeding to which preclusive effect will be given. Um, so again, the, the party essentially had a full and fair opportunity to be heard in that first proceeding. Um, so I might see if, if Stephanie or Will had any other, any other elements to add. I know that's, that's a lot of legal jargon. Um, but yeah, and I think they might, might touch on that a little bit further, but yeah.
Yeah, thank you. Um, so, and I'll have Stephanie jump in. I'll give an informal discussion about how I think about it and Stephanie can clean up whatever mess I make. Sorry. Um, so I think we all have a playground notion of fairness that says, but you said so. People should stand by their word, your word matters, honor matters, especially for a government. If you've told somebody they can do something, you don't want to pull the rug out from under them. Right? Very, very simple concept that all of us understand very well. And in regular judicial matters, so matters that are not quasi judicial, that are not land use matters, there's a notion of precedent. So if a court that's above you has said, hey, you know, there's a rule, we've decided how to read it, we're reading it this way, all the courts that are underneath them have to get in line. So we're all familiar with this, we've seen this notion of precedent, you know, the Ninth Circuit Court said a thing and now everybody who, all the courts that are under them now have to get in line. And I was surprised to find out that in land use, it's much more complicated. So in a quasi judicial proceeding, that notion of, hey, you said this on paper before, so you have to honor that is limited significantly. And it's limited in two ways and there are two different concepts that can be easy to get crosswired. So one of them has to do with issue preclusion. So you could imagine that you might want to say, let's say you had two parties in a disagreement and one of them wanted to say, hey, dear jurisdiction, you've already made this decision. You said this before on paper and you have to, and you have to stick by that. And the, the notion here is that, well, it's complicated. And in fact, for that to actually anchor, you need to pass that five point test that Hallie talked about. And then, you know, the key points again from that are that, you know, that the same parties are being involved, the same issues are involved, the people had a fair and, and a proper chance to, uh, to participate in the process. Were the other two there?
The prior decision is final and the party had a full and fair opportunity.
Yeah. And it has to be the sort of thing where, you know, it, it really is a decision. So if, you know, I write an email, you know, that doesn't have the effect of creating a binding decision typically. Um, so it's relatively rare to find yourself in the case of issue preclusion. It can happen, you know, so if you've got the same parties coming, why would you have this? If you've got the same parties coming back after the same issue again and again, you want to be at some point, you want to be able to say, look, we all hashed this out. And, you know, even though you, you continue to want to revisit this issue, you had your day in court, we're all sticking by it. But it's really pretty limited compared to what you would think would happen. At least that was surprising to me. I thought, you know, once you wrote something on letterhead, it's a done deal. And it turns out that there's a five point test and it's pretty hard to get through it. The other notion has to do with collateral attack. And so, um, this mostly comes in, uh, it's designed to protect sequential processes. So destination resorts, let's say I have a conceptual master plan and, you know, there was a question, hey, does the conceptual master plan meet the, uh, resort financial obligations? If you have a destination resort, you have to put a certain amount of money typically in golf courses and the conceptual master plan will say, yeah, we plan to do it, we're going to build a golf course, it's going to cost $12 million. The, someone might want to come in at a final master plan stage, so a subsequent step in the process and say, hey, look, that golf course, it turns out they're way, they're way cheaper to build now. Facts have changed or, you know, actually it turns out that your analysis was wrong back at the previous step. I want to in this final master plan undermine the findings of the, of the conceptual master plan of prior final document in this current process. So I'm attacking a separate decision through the, kind of through a subsequent process. And that's a big no-no. There's a notion that, you know, that if something's been previously decided, if you're going to try in another process to try to undermine that decision, you've got, you've got a foul. But it turns out that collateral attack also has some really strong sideboards on it and it really is limited to sequential processes. So, um, surprisingly, I'll give you an example. So let's say that I, two neighbors and, uh, both of them are looking to build a house and the first one builds a house and it's almost too tall. And we, the county say, hey, we read our rules, we're interpreting our rules and we find that, you know, that you meet those rules. Um, and then the neighbor comes in and says, hey, I'm here to build my house and I'd like to, I'd like to, my house is also too tall. You would think that the county would be, would be, uh, bound by that prior decision on the neighboring property to do it the same way, but there isn't that notion of precedent. And moreover, if you were to come back and say, hey, I think you actually, if my house can't be this tall, their house can't be that tall, they should have to demolish it. The collateral attack, that would be like, that would be exactly a collateral attack where you're in, on property B, trying to attack something that was, that was, uh, that was decided on property A. I recognize these are relatively confusing and it's taken me a long time to even get this close to explain it. Maybe Stephanie will have some good refinements for you, but I just, I was surprised and continue to be surprised by the notion of the kind of, again, the playground fairness, but you said so, is way more complicated in quasi judicial matters than you would think it is.
Well, uh, I'm just going to observe generally that, uh, all of these concepts in law school, you know, we spend, I think we've helped spend, at least a couple weeks on. So, you know, here we are, you know, and how So, you know, here we are, you know, an hour plus in, uh, yeah. I mean, and, and as I say before, you know, I'm always available to answer any questions you might have. Whether it's tonight or you're thinking about it and you want to, wondering if something is collateral attack or law of the case, that kind of thing. You know, filter and shoot your email. Um, the difference, uh, there, there is a difference between the factual findings and how the, how the law is applied. So, um, you know, I think that the uniqueness of property, you know, in Will's example, the property A and property B, you know, it may be that, that property A, the first one is, is down a little bit. And so that the roof isn't going to, I mean, well, still a third of the limit, but you know, it's not going to be as, as egregious as if the property B, you know, fills up that half. All, I mean, all of those things kind of come into play when you're looking at what the code says and, and checking off the boxes for criteria. Um, but when you're talking about like, what does the legal concept of having adequate access to a property? You know, like, like those, what the county considers, that theoretically should not change. It may be a different outcome for property A and property B, just because the properties are unique, even if they're right adjacent to each other. One might front on line three once, I've done it on others. But, um, but, but yeah, I mean, the collateral attack, uh, concept, you know, with subsequent, you know, I mean, I thought that your example of a, of a CMP and a FMP is excellent, you know, because you market the same overall general development, but there's, there's various applications to each event. And so, you know, what's decided in, in one of the earlier, uh, processes, you know, can't be revisited, you know? Like, um, because that's, that's not binding. And in some ways it is kind of like a law of the case. Um, and, um, in, in the, the issue collusion, um, that's, that's somewhat complicated. The one, the one, uh, example that I was going to give was one where, um, the issue, you know, so like the, the issue preclusion would not be applied because the issue that the one party is trying to say the others were clearly raising was really a side, like, like almost like a footnote, we can call it, um. DICTA, thank you, thank you, Will. Um, yeah, so if it's DICTA and it wasn't really the point of what the court was deciding or what the hearings body was deciding, it was just kind of like a footnote, then, you know, it wouldn't really be fair to say that a subsequent, uh, let it get a, the same one, get it in a different proceeding. Can't, you know, has to be included by that almost throw, throwaway state. So, um, that was one thing I kind of wanted to point out, but, you know, it's, you know, in, in light of the overall, you know, like, everybody should have the fair and full opportunity to present their arguments. You know, you start with that due process, but then you also want to, uh, you know, uh, with one word in, in, in regular courts is judicial efficiency. You don't want to have the same parties litigate the same things over and over again. And, you know, in more, more, you know, I mean, there's efficiencies that we have to be mindful of as well. So it's, it's a bit of a balancing and no two circumstances are that same. So that can be, if you're seeing, I'll get, um, email or a phone call, whether it's from planning or any other department with young that wants to run something by you and this, this something that can be raised, this is something that, you know, um, that we need to address. We provide a forum to address it, but if ours is already been decided.
Great, thank you.
Oh, question.
Have one question here. Only one.
I'm just curious, how often do the, do, um, issues go to Luba? Do we have a number, like how many this year? Or is there an average or?
Uh, percent, no, I can.
Or percent, yeah.
Can tell you right now, um, we, we have had, um, we have had.
Looking, um, so you get a certain number of land use applications a year and that ranges from kind of 500 to, in a really slow year to a thousand ish in a row. So that's your, uh, that's half the equation and the other half is?
Yeah, we, we've had four to date. We are typically, I mean, it's, it's not a reflection, I think, on our staff per se. It's just the complexity of our county, the sophistication of our county. And we are, we lose elbow room every day and, and people are committed to Deschutes County in way that, in ways that, that, um, allow them to really take, take ownership, uh, to represent their, their position. And, and honestly, the, the ability to, uh, to have standing and to appeal the Land Use Board of Appeals outside of attorney fees, the entry level is pretty low. It's like, I think they just raised the appeal fees to Luba. I think they went from 250 to 400 or maybe 400 to, but that's, I mean, obviously you need to retain an attorney and it, it is, it does get quite expensive, but, um, uh, we are, you know, if you were to, if you were to take a 10 year sample, uh, of, of cases that have gone to the Land Use Board of Appeals, Deschutes County would be in the top two or three, um, in the state. Just again, given the, the level of growth and development and the investments that applicants as well as, um, residents and concerned constituents can have about a project, it, uh, it's, it's a contact sport here.
Thank you.
Yeah, if I, if I think I've got the number correctly, I think the Thornburg project is somewhere between 85 and 90 appeals so far. So, so much for preclusion. Yeah, just think how many tens of millions have been spent on legal fees on that one. Tom?
Anything else?
Uh, well, along those lines, actually, if I can. Just a question about th- those costs, um, that the chair just referenced and, and, uh, earlier that Peter did. Um, costs of appeals, attorney fees, all that kind of thing. Are they recoverable as part of this? Uh, I imagine it's asymmetrical, that probably the local government can't recover. But can, uh, applicants recover costs if they're successful on appeal or?
Generally, if a court finds that some, that one of the parties is so far off base as to be wasting everybody else's time, then the other party can get it some money.
Including Deschutes County?
Yes.
Excellent. Okay. Didn't know that.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Um, and that actually, that, so this was my last slide. So we've got, um, if any, any more questions from commissioners, um, this has been, yeah, super good to chat with you all and share, share planning 101. So, yeah, of course, thank you.
All right, Will, you're up.
So I've got your second item this evening. So this is a return to, um, a request, uh, Mr. Windlink said respectfully asked the planning commission to review 24 and 2024 and 2025 hearings officers' decisions. Those are files number 2473302DR and 2472593A. And at a prior meeting, the planning commission had expressed interest in reviewing those files. And, uh, as part of a non-binding informal review of the case and process. Uh, as I note in the memo, because this quasi judicial matter is final, it's vital, you know, that the discussions that we have this, this evening, uh, neither re-adjudicate the matter nor give the appearance of re-adjudicating the matter. Um, and we can talk, I've got, uh, Stephanie, of course, here with us this evening to the extent we've got questions about exactly what the boundaries of that are. Um, and so, uh, I provided to you in your packet, um, some of the key decisions as well as a link to the full record, as well as a link to the previous planning commission's memorandum where we, uh, presented, uh, Mr. Windlink's request. And so, um, what we are here for tonight is to see kind of where you are in your engagement with this. There isn't a formal process for this review. It's not a adjudicated matter, there's not notice, there's not a public hearing associated with it. But it's an opportunity for you to familiarize yourself with the case, ask questions about it if you want to. And to the extent that, you know, perhaps you think you might, uh, find that there are things that you, uh, you're like, hey, I learned something about land use tonight. I'm interested maybe, you know, in seeing the board address, uh, changes to the code in the future. You know, something like that procedural issues might be, might be a, an appropriate level of discussion. But, uh, we are, as we've discussed previously, um, it's important that we don't, uh, re, uh, re-adjudicate this matter. You know, the parties aren't here, uh, in the entirety and, uh, there's a variety of legal issues associated with that. So I don't know if, uh, to what extent the planning commission does a lot of paper. Um, I don't know if you've had a chance to look at it and like have discussions or are interested in discussing that. Or if you'd like me to come back at a separate meeting when you have additional, uh, additional questions or have your, have some more time to prepare, or if you've got questions this evening at a really high level about, um, this very simple factual, who did what and when.
Comments? You want to, how about we start with a summary and, and then we'll see where we want to go from here?
I can give you a really high level overview and please keep in mind that this, I mean, the record here is hundreds of pages if not, but I haven't looked, it might've gotten to a thousand. So I might give you an overview that's going to be a bit cartoony and is going to aim at, uh, overall clarity at the expense of details and the, the details matter here. So please understand that I'm not presenting to you, uh, a lawyerly argument about it, but a general overview that I think is suitable for five to 10 minute presentation. So simple notes here, what we have is a case where the Oregon Department of Transportation wanted to construct a six mile pedestrian trail on the east side, highway 97. Oh, thank you, can do. Apologies. Um, uh, wanted to construct, so they wanted to construct a 6.1 mile pedestrian bicycle trail on the east, uh, side on 97 south of Bend. And, uh, the zoning on that highway shoulder has been a, a topic over time. And ODOT needed to know if they wanted to do this project, if the property was zoned forest or residential. And, uh, the reason why this matters is that in the forest zone, a bicycle path is relatively complicated and has subsequent applications required to develop. In the RR10 zone, bike paths, um, uh, it was, it was found as part of this case, you're just allowed to do them. And so ODOT said, ODOT came to us and they'd been coming to us for years saying, hey, we're thinking about doing this bicycle path. How do you think we should do this? And we said, the maps there are not as clear as they could be. Um, and for those of you that reviewed the packet in detail and looked at it, these old maps are done on, called ILRs, so sheets of plastic. And planners took thin strips of tape and slid them onto the, slid them onto the, on the plastic. And, um, so when ODOT came forward to do this and, uh, Mr. Windlink's neighbor had some concerns about, um, how this was, how the zoning was regarded because it changes the process for the future. And in particular, you know, um, if it's forest zone, there's a lot more neighbor participation allowed uh, for a bicycle path versus RR10 where there's little or no neighbor participation allowed or no neighbor participation. So when this matter came up, um, one of the things that came up was a previous 1999 decision by the board about the ODOT way station. So, you know, as you're coming north on 97 on the right side there, there's, uh, that way station for trucks. And there was a question about, you know, uh, could that be allowed there? And, uh, and the board said, no, at the first place that they asked to do it. And it had to do with the forest zone rules. And in that decision, the board said, uh, you know, we find that this side of the highway is zoned forest. And so, uh, one of the, kind of one of the strong arguments that was running through this case was, look, ODOT, this matter's already been decided, the board already said that it was zoned forest. And, uh, ODOT came forward, uh, together with, you know, the Department of Justice and said, well, that's not actually binding on this case. And this is, you know, uh, to the extent we set you up with, uh, uh, collateral attack and, uh, issue preclusion, it's because here we go. Um, you would think, you know, on a, again, and on a intuitive level, you'd think the board had previously made a decision about this. They said it's zoned forest, therefore that continues to bind parties in the future and it's still zoned forest. Uh, let me back up one step. What is, why don't we know what it's zoned? One, the maps are ambiguous. And two, there's rules in, uh, Deschutes County Code, uh, 1812 that talk about, I mean, these, these cases of ambiguous maps come up. And it says, look, if you can't tell where the boundary between two zones are, it's probably at a property line. If it's not a property line, it's probably in the middle of a river. If it's not in the middle of a river, it's probably in the middle of a road. You know, and it talks about how you work your way through this. So, uh, in 1999, the board said, uh, you know, it's in the middle of the road, this side's forest, off we go. And, um, I think that for a long time, we as staff had thought, well, the board said so, so it's done. ODOT came forward with an argument and said, look, this is actually not a settled matter. And, uh, the argument before the hearings officer and ultimately before Luba, and again, I'm really summarizing here, is that, uh, there are two, there's those two issues, issue preclusion and collateral attack, um, that, uh, define how and if, uh, this issue's already been decided in a way that has, that then is binding on this bicycle path process. And Luba found, um, on issue preclusion, uh, the notion that, hey, this question's been asked and answered, it can't be revisited. It was found that the five point test was not met. And specifically that the zone boundary wasn't actually litigated in the board's matter. So there wasn't a debate, um, between parties about what the zone was in 1999 was, is, it's a little more complicated than that, but that's the basic vibe of it is that it wasn't actually litigated, although it was mentioned and it was not essential to the outcome of the case. So, you know, it wasn't, uh, you know, if in the 1999 version of this, the board had said, hey, we looked at the maps. Um, and we, you know, we've decided that this issue, that this approval is either approved or denied based on this, and we've looked at it carefully. Uh, you might have an issue preclusion, a situation, but Luba, the hearings officer found and Luba concurred that those five points weren't met and so issue preclusion hadn't been reached. So we're at a, we're in a situation where the prior board decision isn't binding on this ODOT process. The second thing that comes up is collateral attack. And the collateral attack has a little more legs to it. So initially there were arguments made by the parties about collateral attack. The hearings officer found that this was not a collateral attack and, uh, that was appealed to Luba. Luba came back with a remand, as we've discussed, or a return to the county that said, hearings officer, tell me more about your collateral attack thinking. And on remand, the hearings officer said, this isn't a collateral attack on the prior argument because, for a couple of reasons. One, that a collateral attack can only happen against an approval. You know, the fear with a collateral attack is always that you're going to undermine an approval and ruin somebody's ability to do something that they then, uh, believed that they had a reason to proceed with. And, uh, and the hearings officer said, no, in fact, the board decision in the way station, the ODOT way station was a denial. So categorically, it can't be a collateral attack. Secondarily, the, the, uh, the hearings officer found that the, uh, that this wasn't a second phase. So, so we talked about, um, you know, sequential approvals where, for example, the, was we were talking about the conceptual master plan and a final master plan and a destination resort. The hearings officer reviewed the case law associated with, um, uh, collateral attack and said, and concluded that, that you only receive these collateral attack protections, um, or prior decisions are protected from collateral attack when you're in the same process, basically, you're in a sequential approval in this case, and that wasn't the case. So both, this is a long way of saying, you know, the question was, didn't the board already decide this matter? And the hearings officer said legally, no. And, or ODOT argued that the hearings officer concurred, Luba concurs. Um, the, uh, so that means that the hearings officer is back looking at the maps. And ODOT brought the maps and brought history, brought a lot of discussion associated with it. And the hearings officer looked at the maps and said, I, based on ODOT's argumentation, I concur with them that the map suggests that the, it's not the center line of the highway that divides a zone, but it is the property boundaries. And therefore the, uh, highway shoulder is zoned residential. And, uh, further went on to conclude that in a residential zone, bike paths are allowed as a matter of right. And that came down to, uh, a notion that, um, about the definitions in our codes. We have definitions for road and street project and multi-use paths. And the hearings officer concurred with, uh, ODOT that these were road and street projects rather than multi-use paths for the purpose of this decision. And, uh, uh, Luba concurred with the hearings officer on that conclusion. So, uh, to back it, I know this is complicated and I apologize. Um, you're all making sincere faces. Um, to back it up a long way, there was a question about how you do a bicycle path and is it easy or hard? Uh, Mr. Windlink's argued it's hard, ODOT argued it's easy. A hearings officer took a look at the history and the maps and said, I think this is a simple matter. It went to Luba once, Luba said, you mostly have this right, tell me more about collateral attack. It bounces back to the hearings officer. The, uh, hearings officer says, well, it can't be a collateral attack. Therefore, that's all the issues. You remember on remand, you only have to deal with those things that Luba asks you to deal with. So the hearings officer knocked out the last, checked the last box. And, uh, that, um, because that was not appealed further onto Luba again, that concluded the pro, the judicial, the quasi judicial process before the county.
And if I may, Mr. Chairman, the planning commission, one of the things that we, we just touched on and just touched on in Hallie's presentation is the, when a matter is appealed to Luba and it's remanded, it goes back to the, the final decision maker. And so in this case, in the, in the original decision, the hearings officers, officers decided, the hearings officers issued the decision. And there, as I recall, there wasn't enough time on, on the, we were subject to the 150 day clock. And there, there wasn't enough, the, the hearings officer proceeding took up unexpectedly a significant amount of the 150 day clock. And so Mr. Wing links did appeal to the board. And I, I can't recall precisely, but I think the timing played a huge role in that. There wasn't enough time necessarily for the board to hear it because you have to re-notice for a public hearing, you have to know people have standing, you got to get on the board's calendar. So inevitably, the board declined review. And when the board declines review, that is, that, that, that is a decision, a point that is mailed to the parties. And that sets the, the 21 day clock for anyone who wants, who may want to appeal. Anyway, Mr. Wing link's appeal to the Land Affairs Board of Appeals, as Will noted, it was remanded on, on, on the matter of collateral attack and additional, additional findings. That matter goes back to the hearings officer. And Hallie had a slide on this. The, the applicant has 180 days from the date Luba issues you their remand to initiate the remand. And then there's 120 days from the time that the remand is initiated, 120 days for the local government to issue a final decision. And 120 days, no matter how, how well we run the process, is not enough time for a hearings officer decision. You send out notice of the decision, there's an appeal window, window there. Mr. Wing links, as I recall, did respectfully ask the board to consider it. And, and we, the staff are, are provided a calendar and said, basically, it's technically possible to do this, but there is not a lot of time. Like, here's the schedule, you have to do it on, on this and this date. If there's any slippage in this, there's not enough time to hear it. And ultimately, there was a lot of discussion by the board of county commissioners, but they declined to hear it. And, and as, as Will noted, the, the hearings officer decision was not appealed to the Land Affairs Board of Appeals and then it became the final decision. But this is an example of how, how the clock is, is not necessarily advantageous in this case for, for Mr. Wing links as the opponent who had some real, real concerns about, about the decision and other matters procedurally. But ultimately, there wasn't enough time to, to, to raise those issues to the board, both in the initial proceeding and then on remand. So we're left with the, the facts of the case as reflected in the record, as summarized by Will and in the materials that are in your, your, your packet today.
Oh, Mr.
So the 150 days and the 120 days, is that a state number or a county number? It's, so the state says that, so it's nothing we can change on a county level?
So I understand there were some other issues that came up post final as far as maybe the processes by which hearings officer was selected and potential bias, et cetera, that weren't, I mean, that came up after the fact, so they weren't available at the time to challenge. Does any of that provide bearing on the case or is that, and where does that come to play?
So, and if, if I, if I misspeak here, I'll ask Stephanie to come up. But generally, the, there's a moment at the beginning of the case, and you certainly have all been, you've had this before you, where you've been asked to see, asked if you have bias or conflict of interest. And conflict of interest is a really narrow, has a really narrow scope. It means in ORS 244, the, a conflict of interest occurs when somebody who's sitting up there is going to make a buck because of what they're deciding. A potential conf, or their relatives. A potential conflict of interest is a scenario where you're not immediately going to make a buck, but you might make, you might make, you'll have a pecuniary interest, so an interest in money. So conflict of interest are limited to situations where a decision that someone's sitting up there, you know, you, a hearings officer, the board will, you know, actually you or your relatives will make actual money from that. So that's one type of problem. The other top, type of problem can be bias. So, you know, if, if you had a situation where, let's say, a hearings officer was just like, I don't like left-handed people. I've said it in the paper, they don't deserve rights because they're left. And, and, and I'm, they will never prevail in front of me. Obviously, you don't want that person to be hearing the hearing, right? And so what there's, what there is, is at the beginning of the hearing, there's a kind of a speak now or forever hold your peace moment. You've all been, you know, you've been asked this when you've been engaged in legislative matters, which is, hey, you know, if you've got any conflicts or bias you want to declare or ex parte contacts, things that might complicate your ability to hear this as a neutral person, you should say so now. And, and to the, and at the moment when that occurred in this case, no such issues were raised. Subsequently, and you, and this is in your packet materials, concerns came up associated with this. But there isn't a, in the county process and in state law, there isn't a way to bring this up, to bring these issues up later. So to the extent that, you know, that you discover at a later date that maybe you believe that the hearings officer was incapable of giving you a fair and full hearing, you missed your speak now and forever hold your peace moment on that.
So, so I guess to further that is kind of where, what kind of a disclosure process or vetting happens with a hearings officer? I mean, hearings officer's obligation to disclose, I mean, connections and biases and, you know, things like the fact that, you know, maybe his wife actually worked for ODOT?
Yes. Good evening again, Stephanie Marshall. I have the privilege, I guess, or the experience of having sat as a hearings officer myself for many years for Deschutes County, for the city of Bend and other jurisdictions. You know, I think that, and I've advised the planning commission kind of on, on, you know, kind of, there's, there's bias, there's conflict of interest, and there's also the appearance of fairness. And you want things to appear fair. And so I had a case, oh gosh, five years ago or so, where one of the experts that was going to be testifying for the applicant, and because I was the hearings officer. I went to high school with them, you know, and so I disclosed that at the beginning. You know, was that an actual conflict of interest? No. Was it bias? You know, I didn't think so either, but I disclosed that. And, and I'm not saying that my way is the best way, you know, it just, it just popped out. It's like, well, it's probably something I should say. As we do with the board of commissioners and with you all, you know, there is that responsibility that, you know, gosh, should I search my, my mind to see, you know, who might react to something that might have this appearance? You know, the disclosures and hopefully I can remember these correctly. I would start a hearing by introducing myself, by stating that I had no interest in the outcome of the application, no pecuniary interest, no interest in the applicant or the property or any of that, you know, and just kind of very generally state that. You know, I never had a situation where I had a relative that, that could be perceived as, you know, having an interest in the outcome of the application. But, you know, it's, it's really a self-regulated mechanism, you know, for the hearings officer themselves, for the planning commissioners, for the board of commissioners to, you know, kind of search their mind and think, well, you know, this, this might be perceived a certain way, so I'm going to state, I'm going to say something about this. And then the other important part of the preliminary statements that are made prior to a hearing is, you know, I might have mentioned, oh, I know this, this expert witness. Nonetheless, I believe that I can hear this in a fair and impartial manner. And I believe that's on our script, that, you know, and, and so it's, it should be thoughtful and it should be, you know, as, as thorough as, as, as the person that's going to adjudicate the matter. You know, if there's anything that they think might interfere with them, you know, hearing the case, they should bring it to the attention of those involved. But it is, it's, it's up to the individual themselves. I don't know if that answers your question, but I just kind of thought I'd give my perspective.
Yeah, yeah, for the most part, and the commissioners top camp has a question.
Yeah, to follow up on this, is there current county code for disclosure or bias?
So Title 22 talks about, and you, of course, have seen this language that talks about at the beginning of a hearing that, you know, that you're supposed to disclose any bias or conflict of interest. Our current county code actually is ancient and it points to ORS 215, 244, which has not existed in at least 30 years. ORS 215, 244 was the previous version of code that talked about government ethics. It now sits at ORS 244. So, you know, and, you know, that's still binding on us, the, the fact that the pointer's wrong in local code doesn't alleviate us of ethics, for better or worse. But the, so the, there is a section in code, but you know, there isn't something that really spells out, hey, this is what, and you know, I think, you, you, I think you all recall when we were doing ADUs, there are many of you have properties that might be eligible for ADU. And you said, hey, am I biased here? And, you know, I think it's fair to say that, you know, that you, you know, as property owners, you, you know, who might be interested in that, you know, that you weren't, didn't have your minds closed to that. It was clear through the process that each of you were very thoughtful about that. The second question would be if you had a pecuniary interest. So you would have an actual conflict of interest if your decision was going to make you or your relatives money. You would have a potential conflict of interest if something that you did might make you money. So in this case, you owned a property that might increase in value because of the ADU. So in that situation, you're required to announce it. So the requirement to announce something is affirmative in the case where you, hey, me or my relatives might make a buck on this, depending on what it's, I'm saying, but it's not a direct thing. It's not like I'm putting money, you know, directly in my pocket. It's a future sale might be affected. This is a potential conflict of interest. I've declared it. Everybody in the, in the room, speak now or forever hold your peace if you think I can be fair about this. Bias is, isn't defined, it isn't defined in the same way. So, you know, when you look at case law associated with this at a really high level, you know, certainly if somebody, you know, had, you know, proven, a proven discrimination against the, the class of person that they were working with, or had, had, you know, had made some significant indication that they were incapable of hearing it fairly. There could be a significant problem there. And so, you know, to Stephanie's point, I've heard many hot hearings officers give the speech about, there's nothing here that would preclude me from having, you know, from deciding this matter fairly. I haven't prejudged this matter and I'm here to hear you. And so that question of bias, certainly, you know, we've talked about this before. We all come in with our histories and our predispositions and things like that. I will never buy a Ford car after watching my parents buy a Ford car that turned into a piece of junk in three months and was not honored for a warranty. So I could never hear a case having to do with the Ford Motor Company, for example. As much as I've seen lots of people have amazing times with their cars, you know, not just disparates the Ford Motor Company. But I couldn't hear a case on it. I have some feelings and I would, you know, I would feel like I need to disclose this. I, I'm looking, I would be looking to get back one for my parents. That I would not be a good hearings officer. So that would be a clear case of bias and I would disclose it and recuse myself in that case and say, I can't do this.
Did that answer your question?
I guess my follow-up would be exploring the option like you said earlier, that we can suggest maybe creating new code for the county commission to consider. Maybe that's in a work plan in the future because it just feels like from what I've learned from this case, from conversations with Randy Winlinks and then also with both Peter and Will, that there were a couple of things, important things that were left out of what should have been disclosed by hearings officer Tommy Brooks. Another one being that, being a former member of BPAC Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committees. So, and along with what Chair Cyrus mentioned earlier of Tommy's wife being the head of, or the senior transportation, infrastructural, infrastructure advisor for Governor Kotek and prior working at ODOT. It just, to me, when I became planning commissioner, you guys told us, it's just best to be cautious and share any potential thing that could violate what would be fairness. So I want to help ensure that moving forward, that there's more structure to it, maybe. I'm just trying to figure out what the best method is for that. So appreciate you answering the question about code and what can potentially be done.
Yeah, I appreciate the questions.
Point of order, please, Mr. Chair. If I may, I think I can interrupt anytime, point of order. It appears that some members of the commission are privy to information or grievances, have had conversations that I'm not, I'm not aware of and are not part of the public record. And in fairness to this matter, that's been adjudicated to other parties involved in the matter. Some of the comments and some of the direction that we're going here, I'm a little bit uncomfortable with in terms of an appearance of readjuicing this matter. So I'm not privy to this information and it's not part of the public record. If we're talking about informational items, review items, or we're requesting maybe further work on bias, that's one matter. But matters of hearsay or outside conversations that aren't part of the public record, that other parties are not here to represent themselves, to me, has the appearance of readjuicing this matter and reopening this matter. I'm not comfortable with it.
Chair?
So, well, I'll answer this first. I actually would defer to the legal counsel on to whether we're entering areas that you aren't comfortable with.
Well, if I understood Commissioner Hofkamp's point of order, it was that he had discomfort in bringing up matters that might not be in the packet for tonight. And so to the extent that we're, we're looking forward with our discussion, like what can we do in the code moving forward? I think that that's what you're looking at rather than, and I can't, I can't speak to what the basis of your point of order was, but if, if, if statements are being made about, and correct me if I'm wrong, about hearing, hearings officer Brooks personally and, and connections that he may or may not have had, that I think Commissioner Hofkamp is, is stating that he would prefer that we not go there. And so I guess the question becomes, is that necessary to what the planning commission may or may not be potentially recommending to the board of commissioners? Do we have to discuss the context of Mr. Winlinks's objections? Or can we just note that there could be another way of ensuring or checking boxes so that there's an appearance of fairness as well as lack of bias and conflict of interest? Correct me if I'm wrong.
With that, I'm going to rule that the discussion is within the purview of the planning commission to at least have the discussion a little further and see where we go with that. I think, it's my understanding, we're more nearly discussing policy issues on recommendations of maybe there's some areas that we may want to tighten things up or look a little tighter, closer at, or not necessarily reopening the case to try to look at whether we should change the decisions that were made, but how maybe if there were some areas of impropriety that we might be able to avoid them in the future.
Yeah, if I may, Mr. Chairman, I, I, I want us to be really confident, really, really, I want to be clear that it is not, this is not dispositive of impropriety behavior. I mean, we, Mr. Wing links has some very strong opinions. There's, there's, there's information that, that he has and he shared with some of you that he finds very sensitive to this matter, but this wasn't part of the record. And so I think, I think that we are as staff, we're in a very awkward position, if you can tell the three of us, like you're, we're, we're, we're right at the edge of,
the edge of, of, we want to honor the planning commission's ability to, to think about policies and procedures. We're going to have to respectfully kind of establish some, some parameters because we're not here to re-adjudicate this case. And I think the question for the planning commission, the chairman has entertained, if this is something you want to explore, but I would ask the planning commission for your consideration, for you to collectively determine if this is something you want to do. It, we need to hear a majority of the planning commission ultimately, if this is something that you want us to pursue going forward in terms of revisiting opening statements, revisiting certain aspects of the procedural code. But it's, I think it's, we're looking for the will of the majority of the planning commission to provide the direction, as opposed, and we, I want to be sensitive to, of course, every individual planning commissioner has the opportunity to present their opinions, their perspectives, but ultimately, the, the commission as a body needs to be providing direction for us.
Thank you. Commissioner?
So, I'm actually just going to make a motion, and then we'll see if there's a second. And then that way, we can find out what the majority of people want to do at this point. So I move that we recommend to the Board of County Commissioners that we would like clarification either in the form of updates to our county code or in some other manner, to better define both bias and appearance of fairness, not just for hearings officers, but also for ourselves and potentially for the board itself. So that, I'll give my argument as to why I think this, if we get a second.
Is there a second?
My second, I'm very curious about your whys.
Okay, go ahead.
All right, thank you. So the reason why I think this would be helpful is because I, I felt that I had, just like Commissioner Stockham mentioned, I felt like I had really nice training when I came onto the planning commission, telling me about what I should disclose and, you know, maybe what wasn't necessary to disclose, but I still felt vague on it. And I still feel vague right now, like, looking back on some different hearings I've been a part of, should I have disclosed this or that, or this or that? All things that are appearance of fairness issues, definitely I've not missed any pecuniary conflicts. Those I'm really clear on. So I, I just think it would be really helpful to better define those, and I think that job belongs to the board. I don't personally feel that we need to talk anymore about exactly any particulars of this case. Person, I mean, I'm open to it, to be honest, but I don't feel like we need to talk about those particulars in order to have a good conversation about, could we and the board and hearings officers benefit from further clarification about bias and appearance of fairness?
Any other comments? Oh, yes, Commissioner?
So Will mentioned that the county code is ancient in respect to ethics. That's almost the exact word you said. And if we are trying to get our clear and objective standards up to date, and we're trying to get our county code in line with state code, I think we shouldn't be ancient.
What else? Oh, Commissioner?
Me?
Yes, you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. I don't disagree with Commissioner Williams. In principle, I don't disagree with the overall top topic of having more clear messaging. I don't know necessarily that that should be the Board of County Commissioners, because I would assume that the state has an ethics committee and we have county council to help us. And I would think that they would be able to provide more clarity than the Board of County Commissioners, is just my opinion.
Yeah, and, and I would maybe offer up that, you're called, but it, it might be more appropriate to have county council give us a workshop on, on ethics and bias and kind of where the lines are and what we should or shouldn't do, and kind of where the, where the lines are and where the gray areas are. If, I mean, I, I would maybe off, suggest a, a friendly amendment to your motion, that it come from council as opposed to commissioners. And that I would also agree that, you know, it'd be nice to have, if we need some updated code that applies to everyone, including the, the hearings officers, maybe that would avoid problems that stem from accusations that have come about since then.
Can I comment on that?
Yes, you're up.
Um, yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm open to the idea of county council maybe being, whatever role makes sense to have in that process. The reason why I'm thinking it might be helpful to have something more formalized than just a one-time workshop for us, is because clearly, I don't want to say clearly, because it's not clear, because it's, it's, I, I didn't realize that that wasn't part of the public record, but Peter, you've clarified that some of the things that were mentioned weren't part of it. But I guess if, if, if a citizen feels like things weren't fair, then that means that there wasn't the appearance of fairness. That's, that seems to me to be kind of like, that didn't work here. And so the hearings officers are experts, really. I mean, the, we're citizens, we don't, don't have any expertise in these issues, we just learn when we're here. But I think hearings officers are experts in things. But, but still, it could have really benefited this person's experience, I think, if, if that had been, if some, certain things maybe had been disclosed earlier. And so maybe there, there is room for discussion among various, like you, Stephanie, but also like, I don't know, hearings officers, a committee of some kind to discuss this and figure out, like, what, what is our actual policy as a county on what should be disclosed in these hearings?
With, with all due respect, Commissioner, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, I think we can, we can update the code. Probably a good idea to have the appropriate references. We can make sure our opening statements are as clear as possible. Bias is about judge, but parties, decision makers like yourselves, and we've, many of you have been on for, Commissioner Karras, you're, you're almost rounding out your eighth year. You've been involved in a lot of land use proceedings. And ultimately, every planning commissioner gets to choose, do I bias? Do I have bias? And it's a judgment call. And we see it with the Board of County Commissioners. There are matters that, you know, they get to determine, and ultimately, if someone feels aggrieved, they have the ability to, to raise a procedural complaint and viol, and that's a due process complaint. And, and so, no, we can have all the, I'm not at all, I'm not suggesting that we don't need to revisit our scripts and revisit our code, but at the end of the day, it comes down to the individual to determine if their experience, their relatives, their interests, as it pertains to a legislative matter, and you, and planning commissioners, you can have some bias, you just have to kind of declare it. You can have bias in a quasi judicial proceeding, but ultimately, the decision maker has to determine, do my life experience, my family history, whatever, does that rise to the level where I feel compelled to say it's an actual, actually, really a potential conflict of interest? And it comes down to the individual, and if someone's feels differently, then the process affords them the ability to challenge that and get it clarified on record. So that didn't happen with, with the proceeding that's, the, the matter that you've been briefed on. It was, those issues were not raised. It's not to say that there were some facts that have been communicated tonight that are very intriguing for Mr. Winlinks, very disturbing, but it wasn't made on the record. And so that's why we have to be very sensitive. And Commissioner Hofkamp noted, it's, we don't have all the parties here. This matter is settled. And, and so I think we're wise to get away from the ODOT's multi-use trail and talk about what it means, I think, for this body to have a, what can you control as individual planning commissioners? You can control any biases that you may have on a forthcoming hearing, a land use matter. We can do everything on our side to remind our hearings officers of this imperfect proceeding, if that's the way to call it. And, but yet, you know, it, it's going to come down to the individual. So I, I'm not, again, I'm not trying to dispel or diminish what's, what's been with the motion that's on the table, but it's, it's gonna, it's gonna come down to one's own judgment and then how that is reacted to for those that are participating in a land use proceeding.
And I would, I would concur that, I mean, I, I look at it from the standpoint of, in a legislative matter, and in, which is 95% of what we do, it's assumed that we all have our individual biases, is why we have the diversity in who we are, that we bring to the table to, to debate and argue our own, like you say, our personal biases. In a quasi judicial, in a hearings officer, those individuals should not have bias because they're there to rule on the facts that are presented to them in a judgmental position as opposed to legislate it. And so there's a little bit of a difference in what our positions are and what our disclosures and, and all of those need to be. And I assume I'll be corrected if I'm, if I'm getting it wrong, but, but I, I guess, you know, I would agree. I mean, some specifics of, you know, where our lines are might be helpful on a, on a work session or something.
Sure. And I, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm happy to put together a memorandum, you know, kind of with some guiding, or even like an outline format, and then we can get into discussion. I think what, in part, what Peter was saying, and this has been my experience, is that there are situations, I mean, there, it's a continuum. You know, you've got certain, certain things that are like, wow, that's really kind of far down that way, even if that person says that I can hear it in a fair and impartial manner. And then you have some that kind of, you know, are in the middle or down this way. I'll just share with you all that I was challenged once as a hearings officer, not for Deschutes County, but the challenge was that, at the time, I'm barely representing developers in my private practice. So therefore, the opposing party, the group of folks that did not want this, whatever it was, Mini Storage, said, you can't hear that in a fair and impartial manner, because you're, you know, you've got a predilection to, you know, believe in development, or whatever it was, whatever their arguments were. And, and, and so that, I felt like I was put in a little bit of an awkward position, because I was like, no, just because I represent that base of clients does not mean that, I mean, I have a different hat on when I'm a hearings officer. So that's just kind of a generalized statement about the continuum. And, and unfortunately, as in many aspects of the law, you know, if I did a search for appearance of, appearance of conflict, or appearance of bias, or appearance of fairness, that, that's the word I was looking for, you're going to get a whole bunch of decisions that are very, you know, varied in the background of, of what happened in that particular circumstance. That said, you know, a hearings officer could disclose, you know, I hate, you know, wetlands, you know, I don't know. I mean, like, I'm just, you know, again, I'm trying to think of something that's like super obvious, you know. I, I, I don't know. I mean, thinking about like what their hobbies might be, or, or, you know, their relatives. I mean, even if we had something that, that has a hearings officer, when they get a case assigned to them, you know, look at this, you know, look at the parties, look at the property, look at the zoning or not the zoning, look at the area of the county that it's in, maybe they really don't like South County, I don't know. And, and then be prepared to have a thorough disclosure, even, you know, even under those.
Just, just, just to dovetail that, I think what's, what the, the system allow, as you said, there's a spectrum of experiences, and the system is really set up so that if someone wants to challenge the hearings officer, as someone did for you, you didn't, it sounds like you didn't just, you didn't say, I have a potential conflict. But someone had the ability to say, you know, hearings officer Marshall, I understand that besides being a hearings officer, you also are a land use attorney, and you represent, you have represented economic development projects. I have real concerns about that. It allowed hearings officer Marshall to say respectfully, here's, here's, here's what has happened, but I'm in my role, I'm paraphrasing, role playing, I'm in my role as a hearings officer, and I can hear this impartially. And I think, imagine this, I, I don't, I don't think any of our hearings officers that have overseen the Thornburg Resort, but I imagine that, and I don't, so I don't think anyone's challenged our, our hearings officers, but I imagine our hearings officer or officers have been to resorts. Imagine that they've recreated in a number of places that looked, could look like Thornburg Resort. Do we expect our hearings officers to say, introductions, opening statements, the, the, the case planners offers, are there any conflicts of interest? Are we expecting our hearings officers to say, you know, I, I, every year I, I go to Mexico, you know, or I have, at, at the past, gone to Hawaii, you know, it, it's just, it's a judgment call at the end of the day. And where the process works is the, those that are participating in the land use hearing have the ability, they do their research, they have, they, they believe they know this person, maybe they're on Facebook, whatever. They have the ability in that moment to raise what they believe is a conflict of interest or a bias. And that will always be the case. And, and so I, I guess I'll just leave it there. That's, that, that's what the process affords.
Commissioner Karras?
So I'm going to stand by my motion that we ask the board to at least look at this. And the reason why I think that I would like them to do that is not to disagree with you guys as staff. I always respect what, what you have to say and the perspective. But I, I actually think in response to Peter's question, do we expect our hearings officers to say what they do for fun? Yeah, I, I do. After this conversation, I'll give an example. So as many of you guys know, I like to go swimming a lot. So let's say I were working, you know, for the city of Bend, and they wanted to, or Redmond, we'll say, they want to install a new swimming pool. And I'm a hearings officer, and I'm hearing about this project. I, I think if I were a citizen, what I'd want to hear from me is something like, hey, just a full disclosure here. My life literally revolves around swimming. I swim this many hours a week. If there's a swimming pool built here, it's going to change my life. I won't have to drive to Bend anymore. This is going to be amazing for me. On the other hand, I understand that swimming pools are extremely expensive. It's going to increase tax stuff, blah, 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 blah. There are a lot of downsides to building swimming pools. So I feel like I can hear this, this case fairly, because even though I love swimming pools personally, I'm here for the county, and this is what I'm doing, blah, 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 blah. It gives me, but I don't expect a random citizen out there to know that this is what my, I'm, I'm super passionate about this thing. It has nothing, it, you know, let's pretend it's not on Google, you, you know, and, and you, you wouldn't know, right? Like, if somebody was a, a resort enthusiast.
You understand, that was role playing. I'm not at all saying that Gregor.
But, but the thing is, but what I'm, what I'm hoping to convey is like, that I, I guess I would like the board to, to think about this or look at this, because I just think that saying, I, I understand legally, it's going to be up to the person to say, like, hey, this is, this is what I like to do, and this is, this is some things that I want you to know about me as a person hearing this. But it, it just seems like it might be nice to have a policy as a county that we are transparent as people that do these roles, because we're in a really crazy political environment right now. And people are freaked out. And so it's just better if everybody is honest and transparent about things. That's my opinion. Maybe I'm wrong. I mean, maybe it's better to keep your cards close to your chest. But I, I just think that when people don't feel like they, you know, they, they feel like they were told everything at the outset, then they don't feel suspicious. I mean, I don't know. But it's, I'm just saying, I would like the board to take a look at it. If they decided not, I wouldn't be like mad at them or anything. I'm just saying. Can you guys take a look at it?
Mr. Kelly?
Yeah, I don't see there's any harm in, I support this, because I don't see that that there's any harm in, in revisiting this and, and going over. And, and I, you know, love a ref, you know, a refresher. I feel like we've gone over a few times, but I, you know, I think it, there's no harm in it. What I was, what I've been thinking about here is most of my biases, I probably am not even aware of. And I think- And I think that's the tricky thing about this is, I would disclose, but I've been kind of going over some of my bias compared to people on the board. And I was like, I don't even know if we're even self-aware enough to understand our biases. So I think that's the tricky part about this is, it'd be easy to disclose a few, if it was obvious, but there's just so much underlying parts about myself that I think I'm just so used to them as being me. So I 100% support it, but I do think it's really tricky. And I also understand that 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 there was some, you know, procedurals that could have been caught.
Could have been raised.
Could have been raised, exactly. So I have, I want to finish this, and then I have one other. It's not.
Commissioner Williams.
How are the hearings commissioners assigned to cases? And how many hearings officers does we have for land use?
So we currently have two hearings officers available, Gregory Frank. It's been relatively difficult to get and retain hearings officers, it's not the highest paying work that's that's available. But, you know, some hearings officers who have some room in their in their in their schedules have taken it up over time for us and we're grateful for that. And the way that they're assigned is that I try to alternate who I'm assigning to the extent that somebody's worked on something before, or they've, you know, if somebody's done a solar project, if adjudicated a solar project previously, I try to keep solar projects with them since they know a lot about them. And it helps us not produce inconsistent decisions on the same topic from different hearings officers. You know, at the outset, we asked them, you know, hey, check your Rolodex, have you, you know, have these people been your clients, you know, is something that we're checking? Or, you know, is there, you know, do you have anything that you want to tell us about this? And, you know, we had, I think, our original choice, I forget who it was for the Thornburg matter back in the day, they they said, I haven't worked on this, but the guy in the cube next to me has, you know, and so my firm's worked on this, I better not touch it. You know, so they they're given an opportunity, but generally we rotate with some focus on issue specialization. And certainly if they say, yeah, no, I'm like, you know, I did that guy's, I did that guy's father's will last week, like I'm, we're in business, I can't. So they're selected, in fact, by me.
They're not, they're paid, but it's not their primary source of income?
That's correct. So they may do, they may be hearing officers for other jurisdictions, but they're paying their mortgage on the hearings officer work of Deschutes County.
I would, Mr. Chairman, the planning commissioner, I, not commissioner, I would also offer an observation that as we, who was it, Commissioner, maybe it's the chair, I can't remember who asked the question, how many times, Commissioner Kelly made it to you, how many, how many Luba appeals have we had this year? And we are, we get a lot of, year to year, we see, we see a handful. And in my career, I've never seen a hearings officer's decision reversed. If you got a reversal, that means the decision is without, without basis. And so I offer that as we're talking about potential conflicts of interest, we're talking about the judgment of an individual in a in a decision-making role to determine what in their mind rises to the level of potential bias. Ultimately, these hearings officers who are attorneys have to, they 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 have, they list, they they take in the record, the public hearing record, they take in the burden of proof, any supplementals, any, any responses from the opposition, which can include opposition, attorney, attorneys representing the opposition. And they take that all into consideration, and then they write a decision that's based on the, I mean, you have the packets, they, the hearings officer's gone through the criteria and explained their rationale. So I just offer that, it's, it's, you're, you were not seeing arbitrary and capricious decisions from our hearings officers. Are they controversial decisions? Yes. Do they get appealed to the board? Frequently. Do many go to the land use supportive appeals? Yeah, yes, they do. Do do we prevail as much as we we receive remands? I think, I don't know what our percentage is, but we see, we we don't always see remand. So I I think it's important to, as you consider this, and and certainly we can take this matter to the board and heighten the sensitivity of this topic about potential conflicts of interest and the importance of disclosure. But I think it's important to step back and and see how this process is being executed, building off of Hallie's presentation today and what we've been talking about today. It is a open, transparent, analytical set of decisions that anybody can appeal if they feel like it's an error. And there's a process by an independent party to review that decision, and that's what we 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 execute every day.
Commissioner Altman.
Thank you, Chair. I may address a question to Commissioner Kears. My question would be, what, because I'm trying to sort of take notes here on on what the motion is, what exactly are you asking in your motion to go in front of the Board of County Commissioners? What what do you want them to make a decision on?
Yeah, so just exactly how I phrased the motion, I'll phrase it again, I might get some of the wording, like, I don't remember, like, if you watch the video, and it might be slightly different the second time. Basically, I just wanted to recommend to the Board of County Commissioners that, and I think I stumbled a little over the wording here, but I'll just summarize or refine based on our conversation, that the Board of County Commissioners has a look at or a conversation about how to better define bias and appearance of fairness expectations for hearings officers, planning commission, and Board of County Commissioners. So to freely, further elaborate on that, I'm just saying that I would like them to talk about how we might better define this concept of appearance of fairness and bias, so that whatever they, the reason why I think this is kind of a board thing as opposed to legal counsel thing, although I would hope that the board would involve our legal counsel, is because they're, they're in this position of having been elected, they have to answer to their constituents, the voting process. And if they, I don't know if they want to set some expectations for the way that people are transparent about their biases and interests or not. I mean, I could see some commissioners being like, no, that's, you know, that's your personal, you like swimming, that's fine, you don't need to, you're not making any money off of a swimming pool being built in Redmond, you don't need to tell everybody about going golfing in Mexico or whatever, like, you can just, if you have a a financial interest in it, yeah, we need to know about that, but don't worry about it with the rest of it. Other commissioners might be like, hey, I just really think that it would be great if people in these roles were just really transparent with the public, we want to set that tone. So that's why I think it would be best if they were to discuss it and see if maybe they explore their options with staff, like, you know, like, maybe one option is they recommend to staff, we want to have a training for all of our different people on this. Or maybe, maybe a different option is, we want to have a manual that really defines these terms extremely well. And then maybe there's a third option, like Commissioner Stockham suggested, like, it's actually in the code defined differently. But I think that the board should should be looking at those options or or asking staff to present them with some options. I'm not personally recommending any particular option over another, I just think I would be pleased if they were to just discuss whether they want to do this or not, and then do whatever they want with it.
This is public records, so I'm not revealing any, anything that hasn't been reported. Again, the plant, we are happy to, you you have the ability to to make recommendations to the Board of County Commissioners, we will certainly carry a recommendation if that's what you choose to do this evening or upon further reflection at a subsequent meeting. It, I would just want to underscore that it's, it's really complicated, and it comes down to individual choice. And and I'm going to give you an example that was, has been litigated in several different venues. The 710 Eden property, I think you're all aware of that, this is the property that would be zoning out of exclusive farm use north of Redmond, they have been very transparent about the intent to subdivide the property into 70 10-acre lots. The Court of Appeal just the, just yesterday affirmed that, the Luba affirmed that plan amendment zone change in the spring, it was appealed to the Court of Appeals, and the Court of Appeals affirmed the zone change just just the other day. In both the Luba proceeding and the Court of Appeals, opposition challenged Commissioner Devone for bias in the way that he he participated, the Land Conservation and Development Commission, in the first appeal, local decision that was appealed to Luba, the the Land Conservation Development authorized the Department of Justice to participate in the proceeding. Commissioner Devone attended the LCDC meeting where they were contemplating whether or not they wanted the Department of Justice to intervene, and Commissioner Devone respectfully asked them to 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 really think about that request. And I think he basically, I'm paraphrasing, but I think he respectfully asked that they do not, that it was a local decision. LCDC went ahead and decided they wanted, wanted to sit at intervenors brief, and the opposition basically challenged Commissioner Devone at Luba, which I think was, I recall, was rejected. It was ultimately remanded, quarter, went to the Court of Appeals, Court of Appeals remanded, on remand, it just went back up this this year, affirmed at Luba, affirmed to the Court of Appeals. They still, they continued to raise that whether or not Commissioner Devone had a, had had a bias. And and the courts found that there are certain, certain latitudes that are afforded to decision makers, basically that the burden is very, very high to demonstrate that an elected official has a a bias. And so I should, and that's a very imperfect summary, but ultimately, the courts rejected that Commissioner Devone had a bias. And so as this planning commission considers asking the board to think about policies and procedures for bias, I just want to let you know that elected official, with elected officials will take that under consideration. And and with with this most recent experience as a backdrop, I mean, again, it's going to come down to individual choice, and we can, we can, we can write things down, we can underscore the importance of sharing one's, one's protect, potential differences. But this was a case that is as fresh as it can be, that a commissioner ultimately was found not to have counter opinions that would prevent them from way, from ruling on this decision. And I think, I just want to be honest with you, that I think it's going to be very difficult for staff to communicate that the board needs to have some explicit definitive terminology on bias.
That's not the motion?
But I'm, but that's, but that's what I'm.
That's not the motion.
That's the tenor, I'm sorry if I misunderstood the motion, but I'm just, I'm letting you know kind of what we're faced with when you're asking the Board of County Commissioners to come with a certain script that defines bias. I don't think a script, I'm compelled as the direct, the community development director to to be forthright about what this motion, how this motion may be received, and how difficult it may be for us to execute. If, we will, we will carry, this will be the last thing I'll say on this, and I'll listen for the rest, but what you're asking for, I think, is is incredibly difficult to implement, because I'm sorry that my example was imperfect about somebody potentially going golfing, but it's, it's a, it's an individual choice at the end of the day, and I think it's going to be very difficult for staff to put something that's prescriptive for the commission to consider, or for the planning commission to consider for that, right? But I'll be quiet. Thanks for considering that, those remarks.
Mr. Chair.
Hey, Commissioner Williams.
I thought the motion involved updating county code to reflect state code. I thought, I thought that was part of, I thought that was part of the motion.
Can I clarify the motion? Okay. So originally, the first time I said it, I I was kind of piggybacking off of what Commissioner Stockham had said, and I think I I did say something specifically about possibly updating the code. And then further refine that when I was asked to clarify it, as we have a conversation and explore your options, rather than advocating for one option or the other. So I don't know that, I don't know where that leaves us with Robert's rules, but that's, that's what I was hoping for in terms of making the motion in the first place and giving us, and honestly, like, I wasn't super attached to the motion when I made it, it was more to give us a jumping off point so we could have an organized conversation without getting bogged down in some of the other things that we're talking about. So I I guess, like, I hope that someone was able to write the motion down, because it's very important to me personally, that the things that I'm saying don't get misconstrued as like, the summary that you gave was different than the motion, and so like, that's, that's like, very trouble troubling to me, and I, I don't know what else to say about it.
Commissioner Kears, here's what I, your recommendation is that the Board of County Commissioner, I use the term examines, how to better define that bias in land use proceedings.
Actually, bias and appearance of fairness.
And perceptions of fairness.
Yeah, I mean, I I said appearance of fairness, I don't know if that's a legal thing or not, but that's, I use that language because you use that language.
I'll just, I'll just restate it. The recommendation is that the Board of County Commissioner examine or consider how to better define that, how to better define balance and perceptions of fairness in land use proceedings.
Bias, not balance, and appearance of fairness.
How to better define that bias and perceptions of fairness in land use.
Appearance of fairness. And I mean, I I'm only being particular about the language because Stephanie used that language. So I'm just using the same language as the lawyer, in case it, in case it's important.
Bias, conflict of interest, and and together, they they create or detract from an appearance of fairness.
Okay, thank you. And so the idea would be, the board would do whatever they want with that, they could be like, oh, yeah, let's talk about that for five minutes, that sure is crazy, isn't it? And they're like, that's all we want to do with this one. Fine, that that's okay with me personally, I don't even know that this motion will carry, like, if if others will support it or not, that's okay if you guys don't support the motion, I'm not going to take it personally. The reason why I made the motion was, one, so we could get off of, get get on to a logical and intellectual discussion about this thing without getting bogged down in the details. The second reason why I made it is because I just personally feel strongly about transparency in general and erring on the side of caution, and I don't know if there's a way to institutionalize that, it sounds like that would be extremely challenging. That's not something I can know as a citizen, I don't know the logistics of this, I'm just saying, hey, can you take a look at it? If the board, you guys' staff are like, look, that's a really nice thought that Jessica or the planning commission sports it, the planning commission had, but it's just crazy to even think about that, that's, it's not possible to do that. Okay, it's not possible, that's all right. But I just feel like it's, it's my job as a citizen sitting on this particular thing, hearing another citizen case example, pointing to some things that I've personally struggled with, of not knowing what to disclose and when and how much and whatever, and just kind of going, hey, that looks like there's a thing here. That's, that's all, I'm not trying to step on anyone's toes or make your, you guys' lives miserable, but it just seems like something worth elevating.
Second, we do the motion, second, and you want to move it along, but just respectfully, I'm I'm inclined to perhaps support the motion, I I think it's reasonably broad, there's no reference to any particular file numbers of the matter that was before us, and I think you're reasonably broadening that. The reason I hesitate to support it ultimately is related comments that council made, the community development director made, that my view is that ultimately, ethics, and I'm going to roll in declarations of bias and so forth, involve enough of a spectrum, or ultimately, at the end of the day, a gray area, that it's really on you. I mean, we can ask, and that's all you're asking, for them to take a look at it. But some things ultimately are not about bright lines and black and white. I think there is that case in in terms of monetary conflict, that's fairly clear, as sharp a line as we can get. But ethical behavior, ultimately, it's on you. Are you going to be, are you going to act ethically or not? And but the the motion doesn't preclude that acknowledgement, I think so.
I appreciate that point, that makes a lot of sense phrased like that, yeah.
Commissioner Kelly, did you have a follow up? You said you had something else you wanted to say.
You said you had something else you wanted to say.
It's not about the bias or appearance.
All right. Do we have any other comments on the motion? Okay, well, vote then. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed?
Aye. Most, nay, whatever.
All right. So is there anything else we want to discuss on this topic? Or I would, I would just offer one thing is, is it might consider just in, in the future, I mean, whether it's hearings officer or whatever, if there's specific judicial topics, maybe it's, you know, maybe it's even us, just so that the public has the opportunity to determine whether or not they think there could be biases, even just a, a simple questionnaire or a bio on the person having the, doing the, the hearing, being the, the hearing body. And I've sat on a, on a jury and we had to fill out a questionnaire on who we were so the attorneys could determine whether or not they thought we were biased for or against their particular, their case. So anyhow, just a thought. Is there any other comments?
Commissioner Kelly?
I was wondering, and granted, this, I have not dug into the weeds on this case at all. I, I learned 95% of reading the packet today. So I don't know the details, but what it sounds like to me, like over thing is, you know, went through the procedure, not unhappy with the, you know, went back and forth. But was the timeline an issue for him? Is that, is that a different issue that we need to be? Is that an issue for other? I understand that we have the timeline to benefit. I would think that would benefit the applicant that it moves, it moves along. But is that part of the issue here was the timeline? Because he couldn't get it in front of the board? He didn't like the hearing officer's case? He wanted a different venue? So he went, he wanted the board, but he couldn't do it because of the time? Was that part of the problem, is that part?
Mr. Windlinks was the appellant.
The appellant, I'm sorry, not the applicant.
The timeline worked for the applicant.
For the ODOT?
Not correct.
Okay, so ODOT.
Terrifies it.
That helps me understand.
It worked well for the applicant.
For ODOT.
But not for the appellant, who was Mr. Windlinks.
Thank you for clarifying. Okay, that makes.
Mr. Kelly, the, the, the appellant or the opponent found what he thought were in some inconsistencies in the hearings officers' experiences or what the relation to his wife's.
I understand.
So he wasn't able to introduce those, what he found were inconsistencies that presumably could, that presented a bias. He did not have the ability to introduce that into the record because he found out too late. And so, and so therefore he was, the bias was, was no longer the issue. It had to be on the facts of the case. And the facts of the case as well, throughout what we discussed this evening, the, the, the facts were ultimately reviewed, remanded by Luba. And the hearings officer addressed, the, the applicant addressed the remand with additional burden of proof. And the hearings officer found that their arguments in relationship to the opponent's counter arguments were reasonable and consistent with the, the county code.
That makes more sense. I had that, I had them flipped.
So, so I guess the other question, back to the initial question that we started an hour ago. Do we have an, as a commission, have an interest in diving deeper into this topic? With regard to, I mean, I think as, as Will said, the possibility of, of maybe a evidentiary type hearing or whatever it was, you had said we have, we have options. A year, we've, I mean, kind of wrapping up your five minute summary. But, but I, I guess the question is, is, is there an interest in, in digging deeper?
No interest.
I'm, I'm a solid no after hearing more about the case today. Yeah, I think it's a done deal. I mean, I can see why it's very frustrating for Mr. Windlinks on a human level. But I, I really feel like it, it is like so clear on every angle that.
Will you open it?
Sorry. Okay, I thought, sure, I was going to say something. Yeah, it just, I mean, it just sounds very, very clear. And you guys did an amazing job of presenting the context with our general background to give us an education. And then all of the things that, it just, I mean, very, very detailed and impressive putting information in a small space. It just seems really clear to me, sorry. I'll stop talking.
Anybody else, comments?
I would, I would move that we ask the board to consider updating our county ethics code to reflect that of the state.
Okay, is there a second?
Can you, can you clarify what you mean by ethics code?
Like. So Will said there was a section on ethics in the county code, am I correct? And that it is ancient in its update.
At bare minimum, our current code is pointing to a pre-1994 version of the state statute. So, you know, the, the wires aren't plugged in right. Doesn't have a legal effect, but at bare minimum, that bears correction. And what I was pointing to in there is that might be a moment to think more broadly about, you know, how other jurisdictions have approached this. So, you know, in preparation for this evening, I asked some of my sister jurisdictions, hey, how do you communicate to your boards and your hearings officers? And a lot of them are using kind of very, you know, something very similar to what we're using. Other jurisdictions have, you know, if you think about the, the suite, and it's a, it's a difficult issue we've talked about this evening. But I think at minimum, you know, there's a minimum a housekeeping effort that's needed, which is to change RS 215, 244 to RS 244. And by the time we've got the red pen out there, you know, I think it's an opportunity to see if that section actually is still up to date with case law and is as informative as it could be. So there's probably a little, you know, some red pen in the code that happens there that's very appropriate. And then from there, I think that it's surrounded by policies and procedures and statements, you know. So when I think about the project broadly, when I conceived of it, and I don't want to get sideways of how you've conceived it. When I conceived the project, it looked something like a code update surrounded by a concurrent effort to update our, our kind of our hearing statements, our guidance to hearings, our policy documents. You know, so like, for example, the, the manual that you received as planning commissioners, you know, it's, you know, maybe we need to rewrite the section on there on in conflict and bias and interest to make sure it's, you know, as clear as it can be, given all the concerns that have been raised. So a relatively limited legislative package of trying to update the code to make sure it says what, you know, it needs to say today. And a broader package of kind of the surrounding documents that, you know, that we produce that are non-binding but helpful, you know, that the, the recommendations and the information we provide to you and the statements that we have you read and we read to you before hearings. It seems like all of these, there's a, there's a work plan item there to take a look at them together.
Because when I was chair, and I know as your chair, when someone's reading and then we have to read, does any, do you have a conflict of interest? I know I didn't hear or a bias.
Or I know I didn't read.
So those are, I mean, those things are in part backed by code and are part are just, you know, we've worked with legal counsel to write them. So at least as I've conceived of it, you know, I, and I certainly will honor the motion that you've had tonight and use that as my guiding principle. You know, I think that that's, that's all in the universe of achieving the goal that you've outlined is, you know, asking the board, hey, are you interested in talking about this? And if so, I think it probably looks like a work plan item. So you remember, of course, our annual work plan, you know, we would, item 15, annual work plan. You know, planning commission directs, recommends that the board directs staff to engage your work plan, to modernize Title 22, Section blah, 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 to reflect current state code, as well as supporting documents in, you know, in policy and opening statements. I think at least as I've conceived of it, and this is a first cut, that's how I, that's how I would go about implementing what's been said so far.
So we're, we're, I was going to say we're.
The motion that's already passed because right now it's an invitation to talk about it. I think that that's what it turns into.
We're a little ahead of ourselves, we don't have a second.
Yeah, of course.
Just to clarify your motion before I second it. It sounds like you're moving to do the housekeeping amendment part of this. Correct, okay, I'll second that.
Okay, now it's, we have a second. Is there any discussion, motion?
Well, I, I think I just heard staff say that, with all respect, Commissioner Williams, that their staff is already going to take forward that recommendation as part of a broader take a look at our first motion. I mean, I'm, I'm not opposed to a subsequent motion to put further legs behind it.
I wanted to just kind of cover the bases to make sure that we had the whole package.
Okay. Any other comments?
I agree. I think in case my, my motion was confusing in any way or, or seems like a can of worms, here's another motion that's very, just like, let's just get things, let's get them cleaned up a bit.
Hey, all those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed? Motion carries.
And also, it's just occurred to me, it's nice to have two separate motions because the other one was not unanimous. So it's kind of nice to have a, we had one unanimous to do the housekeeping and then one not unanimous to do the can of worms. So that's, that's information in and of itself.
So I'm going to move on to the next topic, and that's staff comments.
Yeah, thank you. We've gone later this evening and I appreciate, you know, that this is a, this has been a, you know, a detailed hearing and I appreciate all your patience, but these things, my head hurt. And I imagine you'll all be reaching for the Advil after. I wanted to say in some good news, we had, we've six, we have a, a recruitment successfully for an assistant planner in current planning. We've had some demand coming from, in part of retirement and in part increased demand. So, you know, many of you have been through dark days with us when we had, you know, we had too many staff for the work that we had. And, you know, now brighter days where we've got plenty of work and taking on an additional person in that regard. And they'll be starting on November 17th. You'll probably never see them because they're in current planning. But happy to have that happen. The, I think you've been tracking the, the, probably the Sisters UGB expansion. I don't know how much you've been watching that process, but you know, there had been kind of a last minute. Mr. Bill Willetts was looking to be potentially included in that and was going through a zone chain process to improve his eligibility for that, that process. The Board of County Commissioners approved a zone change from Forest to MUA 10 to a residential zoning. Very well attended and certainly lots of opinions about that. And signs are that that will be appealed into the courts. So definitely it'll be worth your time to watch the papers to see how the Sisters UGB expansion process goes. If nothing else, to familiarize yourself with it because Bend is going through a UGB expansion process. And so some of those issues, considerations, you may well find before yourselves as our, our planning commission, as they work through that process in the future. That's a huge topic and I see a couple concerned eyebrows up there. We'll talk more later.
Do you, do you have a rough timeline on either of those?
The, the city of Bend is looking to do a sequential. So typically, UGBs expansions have been done as one large package. And the city of Bend is going to do this in a sequential process where they go through some of the underlying studies that are used to justify and support the UGB expansion. And then, and then come into actual decisions about it. And we see that happening over the next two-year period. So they have, they have schedules for studies and then UGB expansion in a second biennium. So we'll, we'll definitely, as their schedule firms up and especially as they come before Deschutes County for the part that we do for that, you'll get firm, firm information. But to the extent you see articles in the paper about the Sisters process, you may be interested in reading about it because it, there's a lot of overlap there and some interesting moves that, that people who want to be included are making. The, let's see, what else do we have? Current planning file volume. So we're starting to see our seasonal decline in current planning, planning file volume, but nothing to set any worry off about the budget, which is good news. Planners are enjoying a little bit of relief from what was a very hectic summer, well, hectic enough summer that caused us to hire. And at the very moment we're hiring, it's calming down, as it does every year. So the, but just a little bit of relief on the team and thinking about your next meeting. Tanya and I take this tentatively, are cooking up a presentation to you for Terrebonne that I am conceiving of as Terrebonne today and in land use sense. So we'll be giving you a presentation about, here's Terrebonne, here are the subzones in those sections. Here's, it's an unincorporated community, here's what that means. Here's the type of applications we've seen in the past 10 years. Here's the septic difficulties that people have had. Here are, here are really kind of places in the code that we've had problems and hearings officers have had problems with the Terrebonne code. And this is designed to prepare you for as ultimately we move into the community plan, helping you understand kind of how, you know, the, the relationship between the community that's developed there and the regulatory approach that Deschutes County has imperfectly implemented over time. So give you kind of, you know, first we gave you an infrastructure panel and now we're going to zoom in a little bit to the, to the existing regulations. So, you know, to the extent that you hear testimony in the future that we should change those, you know where we started.
Is that everything?
Hey, Stephanie.
Thanks, you guys. Commissioners, tired. As, as Mr. Kautowski mentioned, we got the 710 decision from the Court of Appeals yesterday, which this was a plan amendment, zone change application for 710 acres of property that was approved by the board in 2022 and went up to Luba, went up to the Court of Appeals, came back to the county, went up again, Luba affirmed, and then the Court of Appeals just affirmed. So we'll see, there is a possibility that, that the petitioners might want to seek further review by the Oregon Supreme Court. And that has a 35-day timeline and, and it's not an appeal as of right, which means the Supreme Court has discretion as to whether they will accept review and there is a number of considerations. So we'll see if that gets appealed by mid, later in November. Other than that, I saw one of you all yesterday. There was a hearing on a text amendment in Tumalo for RV parks that was discussed. They had a hearing on that, the record's still open. That one was a little interesting because there were components of the application that were more quasi-judicial and components that seemed a little legislative. It was reviewed by a hearings officer who recommended to the board as to the action to take. But it's just, it was, it was kind of, you know, not clearly defined, not black and white, as, as somebody here mentioned regarding the other issues we were talking about this evening. So, so anyway, that was, that was very interesting, very well attended, lots of participation, a lot of people interested in that text amendment. I also want to note that the text amendment is not the approval of any particular RV park. That would just be allowing the use conditionally. And so then an applicant would have to apply. So that, that process is clearly quasi. But that's just a highlight of a couple of things I've been working on. So yeah, let me know if there are any questions.
Great, thank you.
Peter?
I do want to express appreciation for the, the conversation today. This, this, this topic on, on conflict of interest and bias is complicated. And ultimately you get to lean on the board and, and communicate as you did with those two motions. And, and what, what I may have done imperfectly is, and I don't think it's a can of worms. I just, if we're going to use that as, as a metaphor, I wanted to let you know that we're going to be wearing waders on this because it's, it, it's a, it's a difficult topic to navigate with the board in light of what I mentioned in 710 and just the various facets. But I, I, I think it's incredibly important that the planning commission hadn't recognized that you have the standing and the responsibility to communicate to the Board of County Commissioners on issues that you think are really important that they should revisit. The delicate balance for me as, as your planning director, for Will as your planning manager, for Stephanie as your county council is just to, to give you context, is it guidance or just a framework? And anyway, thanks for allowing us to participate and engage, albeit imperfectly. But this, this, this topic, this land use decision that was rendered in its own way is, was very unique and has a lot of facets to it. So thanks for, for weighing into that. I only had one update for you. Doesn't really pertain to your responsibilities as planning commissioners, but our building official who's been with us for 16 years has announced his. But our building official, who's been with us for 16 years, has announced his 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 resignation on December 1st. So he's been with us for quite a long time. And so in the next few weeks, we're going to be initiating a a robust recruitment. You know, an external recruitment and a a robust interview process in January. So that's commanding a lot of my time just as we deal with those inevitable transitions in a department as we are going through kind of succession as as one guard's kind of stepping away. And and we're we're excited. And albeit it's a little intimidating to, you know, bring on a a new building official. But that's part of the process. And so that's that's going to be underway. And I'll certainly keep you informed if you're interested. But a a very important position, as you know, we our building division provides building services not only for the rural county, but in the cities of Sisters and Lapine. So it's a very public facing position. So that's the update that I have. But again, thanks for a nice evening.
Commissioner Altman.
It was really nice to see a new face today for the first presentation, Callie. So I appreciate her being there and her presentation was great. I doubt she's still in the room, but I just want to say thank you to her. And I also really enjoyed the discussion. I think it was good to have in terms of not reviewing the case per se, but just having, you know, interest in how we could get more clarity and do some housekeeping updates. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Commissioner Scott Camp.
Yeah, I just appreciated the this lively discussion regarding policy and stuff tonight. So that's all I have to say. Thanks, everyone.
Commissioner Hope Camp.
First, a question for staff, I guess, maybe Tracy, actually. If you are able to either live or after the fact, without too much frustration, get the votes down on different motions, or is that not clear enough for you in terms of motions that are made? And you're able to get them? Okay, all right, just curious about that. Thanks. And then just an observation that Mark Knopfler, who's one of my favorite singer songwriters, lead guitarist, formerly of Dire Straits, now on his own for many, many years, wrote a tune that I'm not going to even get close to quoting the lyrics. But I think it applies here in terms of ethics and in thinking about ethics and stuff like that, at least it applies to me. Something about, you know, beware when you point that finger, that there are a lot of fingers pointing back at you. And ethics is not only a gray area, but one that when we think about other people's ethical behavior, we have to examine our own, in my view. But thank you for that.
Commissioner Kelly.
No, I, you know, I feel super honored to be up here because I'm I learned so much every meeting. And I just am really grateful to be in this position with y'all. And I learned so much from from each one of you. And I loved the presentation today. Some of it was review, some of it was really thought provoking, and and I learned, I learned a lot. So no, just thank you very much. And that's about it.
Commissioner Karas.
Just to piggyback off of Commissioner Hope Camp's question to you, Tracy, I know we had a conversation a while back about how AI could transcribe the minutes. I see them or transcribe the conversation and make minutes. But then it seemed like maybe you were going to have to go back and watch the video to get who made the motions. Do you have to, are we are we making you do that or can AI get them?
I can, since you're on the mic, Tracy, I can get this. So what happens is the transcript that you're seeing created below. And if you've ever looked at it carefully, it's kind of what we're talking about. I then turn an AI loose on it at a subsequent step and say, hey, this is a government meeting. Here's the agenda and here are the people who are there. Try and guess who was talking about what and make a summary of what was talked about. And so as the case is this evening, most of the time, there's a pretty clear quote of what the motion is. You know, and in this case, there was a lot of discussion between the motion and elaboration of motion, totally fine. But the AI is going to choke on that.
We'll see how the AI does with my changing the motion.
Go back. Because I get it.
Okay, but it knows I like it can tell that it's my voice at this point, like it knows that because I haven't been saying I'm Jessica Kiris and I'm making this motion.
I it's so it's not actually, it doesn't, it's not listening to your voice, but does surprisingly well from context clues. You know, so at the moment that the chair recognized you.
Okay.
Sometimes that gives it away. And it does a pretty good job of it. And, you know, also, you know, I've appreciated, you know, members of the Planning Commission have provided their personal notes to me. And I tell the AI, hey, whatever you think, you know, trust these first. So that combination has produced the largely usable minutes that you approve each each meeting.
So it's working right now, the way we're doing it?
This one will be, this one will be important, you know, as you see the minutes to the extent, you know, you're going to see the AI take a stab at it and me correct it. If you have any concerns with how I've captured the motion, and you can see even in real time with Peter writing that down, that there, you know, there can be, you know, getting the exact words right are important. So let's see how we do. I hope to do, I I hope to do well.
Right, thank you.
I'm just kind of do, okay. I just wanted to say to Peter, like, I really appreciate the context too of hearing about like why this might be a thorny issue and a tricky one. Because it kind of also helps me at least personally temper my expectations in terms of like, yeah, like what, you know, like when you ask like a software engineer, like, hey, can you just like do this to your thing? And they're like, it's like 100 hours. Versus like, you're like, thank you, asking for this big thing. And they're like, oh, yeah, I can do that in five minutes. So like sometimes just really nice to know from people that do this all day long, like, is this a big ask or a little ask? And so I really appreciated that. And also, I just wanted to say about, I hope you guys pass on to Hallie just like how great she did. Because that was just such a well delivered presentation.
You can always tell when Peter's getting nervous because his answers get longer. So Commissioner Williams.
Me too.
Nope.
Okay, and I'd just like to thank everybody. We had a, we went a little longer tonight than normal, but I think we had a very good, robust discussion on a lot of, a lot of issues. And thank you, everybody.